They want to be well for their kids to be down, but when you're in survival mode all the time, that's kind of a hard thing to do.
Okay.
That's the area that I work in. And so what I know is that we've seen that the best thing that we can do is connect to mentors through our family.
Mm-hmm.
And that-
Which is why we run buses and bring in forty. We have sixty jeans on Wednesday night.
And the problem is that, you know, you're doing a little piece, you know, there's so many people that that know. And we know that that this makes a huge difference. It makes a huge difference in the criminal, finishing school, even going on to secondary education. So people have needs that-
They've got a lot to be better at.
So I gotta learn to-
I think it's universal.
And I can tell sometimes.
Not everybody, not everybody, but but like-
Okay, good.
Hasn't heard back yet. But we're definitely-
Because of that, because of their color that they're being discriminated against as a business owner, or like?
I don't, I tend to liken it to no one but anyone. I, at this point, I can't get personal with anyone. I'm pretty-
You got everything you need, ma'am?
I hope that was okay.
All right.
I mean, there's a lot of, you know, I think-
Scott and Quincy are the only two that I would otherwise thought were going to be here that. And Scott, a lot of times with his job runs, well, actually, both of them sometimes, five-thirty is tough.
I'm going to call the August twelfth, twenty twenty, study session of the Holland City Council to order. A couple of things that I do want to make sure everyone understands, in the age of COVID-19, this this body has worked very hard to be able to continue to meet in person. And in order to do that, we've done a couple of things. We've made sure that that social distancing is here, and we also require the wearing of masks. And we do require the wearing of masks appropriately, please. And that means covering both your mouth and your nose. And if you have a difficult time breathing, believe me, I understand. If you have a difficult time talking that way, believe me, I understand. I probably talk as much or more than anybody does, much to everyone's chagrin with this mask on. If I can do it, you can do it. We want to be able to continue to meet in person, and I do see some folks out in the audience whose noses are not covered. Please cover your nose. If not, we may have to stop the meeting, because we want to continue to be able to to meet here. And yes, I do see you there without your without your nose covered. Please cover your nose, sir. Thank you. Appreciate that. We we're going to start the meeting with public comment. We we allow three minutes of public comment during our study sessions. There are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, there's a yellow light, and there's a red light. We would ask that you keep to that time. We're very strict on that. The green light means that you still have time available. The yellow light means that you have just one minute left, and when the red light comes on, your time is expired, and we are very strict about that. There are a lot of folks here tonight. I'm going to make a guess as to what a lot of folks are here to talk about. Please note that there is nothing in regard to the nondiscrimination ordinance that is on the agenda this evening. We we definitely welcome anybody's public comment, but please recognize that we are human beings up here as well. And so please try to limit your comments as much as you possibly can, but you are free to make comments about any subject that you would like to. Also note, it is one-way communication. You are communicating to council. We will not be answering questions. We'll be not be responding to comments. But next week is when the nondiscrimination ordinance is on the agenda. I'm just making an assumption that that's what a lot of folks are here for. So when you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And if there's someone here who would like to address council?
Pardon me?
Oh, yes. And also, I did, if if I was going to do it, I'm sure Mr. Tuthui was going to do it as well. This council is dedicated to civil discourse and a decorum in this room. People have been wonderful so far. We do, you are here to address us. You are not here to address each other. We do not stand for communication between each other. We do not stand for any any kind of responses to what somebody may say. Please be respectful of your fellow residents of the city of Holland. This group talks to each other with respect. This group discusses things where we may disagree with each other vehemently. We are always respectful in this chamber, and we expect that from all of you as well. So having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Bart Spencer, ninety-two Liberty Drive, Holland. I'm actually going to be reading remarks from Mr. Bob Ashby, who was unable to be here tonight due to hospitalization. He writes, "This nation was founded on the idea of representative governance. To that end, an intricate system of checks and balances was established and intended to be the model at all levels. That system is designed to be slow and methodic so as to force significant political and legal changes to prove the veracity, necessity, and worth, as well as their impacts into the future on the very fabric of our civil existence. It is beyond unnerving for me to realize that the majority of Holland City Council desires and is attempting to govern in such a way as to supersede this most fundamental representative governance. I say this for several reasons, not the least of which is that we now know that citizens of Holland have been left without knowledge of the council's actions. There has been only minimal publishing of the proposed ordinance language. The fact is that few citizens monitor the city's site because they implicitly trust their leadership. Where have been the proactive efforts to reach out by the council? Representation rests on communication. Equality of representation is also fundamental. However, at this point, aided by the anemic effort of outreach, the council has not been, and the majority demonstrates no intention to, serving the community and representatively. Instead of discussions have been based, instead, discussions have been based almost solely on the claims and wishes of a very small ideologically-driven segment of the city. The members of council may have been elected, but the reality does not afford it arbitrary rule. If that were not the case, the proposal would also define religious protection as including ownership or operations of public or private business or nonprofits. Finally, these proceedings have largely been conducted as if the council's representative responsibilities are still living in 2011. This would be tantamount to tearing up a city street based on its condition nine years ago or remodeling the civic center because the old one was falling apart. This is a kind of rational nihilism. This is not representative governance." I also would like to add my own thoughts real quickly. Where is the light? Oh, right here? Okay. And that in my conduct with the community, and I do a lot of it, is that I've seen a verifiable event of discrimination based on sexual orientation. And so I'm wondering, are we fixing something that's not broken or has not produced itself yet? There may be out there, but I've not seen anything that's verifiable. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Bart. And in between each speaker, city manager, as part of his other duties as assigned, will be sanitizing the podium.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to point out that we have people outside, so in good neighborly fashion. It would be nice if some of the people after they comment would actually leave so that some of the people that are looking to comment can come in. And of course, this is a meeting that's being recorded, so everyone can go back and watch and make sure they hear everything that people say.
Well said, Mr. Van Beek. Thank you very much.
So we can stand out in the hallway then right outside the building?
Yeah, we, just as long as you're-
Actually, outside.
Outside.
Yeah, outside the building. Correct.
Do you have the speakers set up today, Keith?
We don't have speakers because it wasn't on the agenda, but again, everything's being recorded, so people can watch this at their leisure at the City of Holland website.
Okay, and I'm going to, I don't think your mic, was your microphone on for that?
Yes, so the, so no, we do not have the speakers outside tonight because it wasn't on the agenda. But again, people can move outside. We'd ask that to be neighborly. But this is being recorded, so people can see it on the website. So no one's going to miss out on anything by being neighborly and allowing other people to speak.
Thank you for that. And yes, we are a neighborly community, and I and I know that everyone wants to give everyone else who has an interest in speaking the opportunity to be able to do that. And you're exactly right. We're broadcasting it live, but we are also, it is recorded. It's on the city's YouTube channel. You can watch it anytime that you want to. So, great. Would you please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record?
My name is Dr. Jane Dickey, and my Holland address is thirty-five East Twelfth Street. I'm so proud of the Holland City Council voting unanimously to consider adding sexual orientation and gender identity as an ordinance protection for our community and voting down the passing this as a simple policy. Yet I listened with dismay to the comments expressed to this council at its last meeting. The need for an ordinance was made clear as people expressed their desire to discriminate against LGBTQ community members. Almost all of the individuals who spoke, spoke against passing the ordinance from a religious perspective. It's essential that you remember your role as government officials. You are not a church. You are not here to represent all of, you are here to represent all of the people of this community, whatever their faith or non-faith. Even in this very religious town, only half identify as belonging to any faith community. I am a person of faith who believes that the gospel requires love and full inclusion of all God's people. Even the conservative Reform Church in America, Holland Classus, supported nondiscrimination and full inclusion in civic life for LGBT people nine years ago. Passing this ordinance does not require you to take a stand on your religious faith. Rather, it asks you to affirm that in civil society, every person must have access to basic needs for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That means equal access to jobs and finding a home. Does it matter what shapes sexual orientation? As Hope College psychology professor for forty years, I can say that sexual orientation and gender identity are significantly impacted by factors beyond choice. Still, passing this ordinance doesn't ask you to take a stand on causes of sexual orientation, but it does ask you to take a stand on human rights for all people and having access to housing and jobs. People are watching, and the people I most worry about are my young LGBTQ friends and their friends. I worry about my young Latinx friends who are afraid even to testify in support of the ordinance for fear of losing their jobs. Will you tell them that they are fully entitled citizens and that they have as many legal protections as anyone else? If not, you will see that young people, regardless of their sexual orientation, will not want to stay in this town, nor will businesses that serve them. I look forward to the day very soon when we take a clear stand against discrimination and for the full inclusion of all of our citizens, not as a policy, but by adding it to the law in nondiscrimination ordinance. Thank you for your-
Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes.
Civic engagement. You are a government-
Thank you. Your time has expired.
I look forward to your leadership.
And would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Margaret Preston, and my address is eleven eighty-six Cranberry Court on the South Side. My words will be few. I probably won't even take the first minute and a half. But I want to quote from Rosaria Butterfield's book, "The Gospel Comes With a House Key", and it comes out of our post-Christian world chapter, page fifty-three. "Part of being responsible, brothers and sisters in Christ, means knowing you can't give a good answer to a bad question. Indeed, the issue that divides us must be confronted. Is acceptance the same thing as approval? When Ken Smith first told me twenty years ago that he had accepted me but did not approve, I was not offended. The culture in which we all lived did not collapse the two. But today is a different story. It is important to understand that. Today, we refuse to both accept and approve of those who identify as LGBTQ, et cetera, is to deny their rights to determine for themselves what personhood means. This brings us to the epicenter of the worldview divide. Whose image do we bear? The image of God or the reflection of our sexual autonomy? Thank you."
Thank you, Margaret.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to suggest that it's, you can't make people leave, I suppose, but we have people standing outside. So at some point, if people don't start leaving, we're going to have the people outside go first.
We will. Thank you very much. I appreciate that advice. Would you please state your-
Thank you for having us here.
I'm sorry, I missed your name and address if that was what you just said.
I'm Bernie Timmerman, pastor of Zion Chapel, nine thirty-seven Royce Avenue. We're here kind of a unique way. We are under your jurisdiction. We read in Romans thirteen that there's no powers that be but are of God, and we all have to be under those powers. And very strong warning that he that resists the power receives damnation. That's me, and you're ones in authority. So we have to recognize that. And at the same time, we have to recognize that the church, not not to be overseers, but to be witnesses. John Adams wrote, "Our constitution was made for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other proceeding." That sentence Adams wrote, "Ambition, revenge, and licentiousness would break out the strongest cords of our constitution as it will go through a net." And remember two words there? Morality, moral, and religious. And the people generally want to be moral without religion. That is the biggest influence to keep us moral. That is the place of the church, and that is one of the issues that we are dealing with, with the homosexual issue. We're really dealing with sort of two issues there. One is the homosexuals themselves, the lesbians, and the other is homosexual marriage, which is allowed, and we have to be under that idol. But at the same time, some of these things are taking place that we don't see out there according to the Bible. Abortion is one, just for an example. And many times, the church is more to blame than the government. My first experience with abortion was sixty-five years ago. An elder pointed down the street, "That's where the doctor lives where the girls go in trouble." That's all he said. He should have warned me as a young man, "Don't let that happen to you." But the church is silent, and later the court had to deal with it. So when we don't do what we have to do in the church, then the problem gets in your hands, the government. Sometimes they don't know what to do, and that's a difficult thing. But one of the things I would like to emphasize is in regard to the homosexual issue and the lesbian issue, is there's been reverse demonstrations and reverse what wasn't allowed. A few years ago, there was a woman that the church wanted to get to speak here in Holland.
Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes.
All right. I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you, Bernie.
Can I face the sentence or not?
Uh, no, we're we're very strict on the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Lindsay Small. I live at two-two-one Fox Down on the North Side of Holland. I'm also a local pastor. I realize that I am the eight-hundred-and-seventy-sixth person to point this out, but we are living in unprecedented times. I'm learning that in the midst of unprecedented, there are some things that need to take precedence all the more. Things like basic civil rights for all, equal protection under the law, and one more that my faith compels me to add, loving our neighbor. This is an easy thing to do when neighbors all think alike, act alike, and even look alike. It's harder when we are not alike, which is why it's so much easier to retreat, to divide, and to exclude. But the Bible I read does not have disclaimers under the word neighbor. All those in this room, this block, this city, this lakeshore, are my neighbors, and I am called to love them. My brother sent me a picture from his living room window in the early morning hours of May twenty-seven. Ten stories below on Lake Street in Minneapolis, his grocery store, his bank, and his gym were all on fire. Residents of his building were standing guard, elbows linked, protecting their children against the few who had mistaken violence as a noble act of protest. The next day, I asked him if he and his husband were planning to stay out in the suburbs until it was safer. "No," he said. "We're taking our valuables and our cat to a friend's house, and then we are coming back home. We are going to help clean up and stay where we are." It was their small way of loving their neighbors. Neighbors, it is alarming to think that Holland would perhaps not be a place where my brother and his husband would feel loved as neighbors. One of my favorite mentors used to say, "Grace makes room." Where there was no room before, there is now room because of the power of grace. This ordinance makes room for all of us. It invites us to love our neighbor, even if, and perhaps even especially if, we do not agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. I'm Dr. Linda Dykstra from sixteen two oh one Harbor Point Drive. As you probably already know, there are at least two cases based on the Elliot Larson Act that are presently being successfully challenged by the attorneys at the Great Lakes Justice Center in Lansing, Michigan. As you probably also know, and I'm quoting from one of their documents, "All individuals already have protections of the law and the right to fair and equal treatment under the existing law and under federal and state constitutions. Since all individuals are already equally protected under the law, as well as under federal and state constitution, there is no need to change the city charter." Let's review the facts. If you believe in creation, the Bible clearly states, "God created mankind in his own image, male and female. He created them." If you believe in evolution, an evolutionary biologist and a developmental biologist recently wrote an article entitled "The Dangerous Denial of Sex," in which they state, "In humans, reproductive anatomy is male or female at birth more than ninety-nine point nine-eight percent of the time. Denying the reality of biological sex and supplanting it with gender identity is academic theory." And I would add, it is also social theory. Social theory taught and encouraged in our public schools and supported in our media. Biological sex is objective reality. Think about the excitement of prospective parents when via an ultrasound they learn the sex of their child. In contrast to objective reality, gender identity is a subjective choice, subjective choice, a choice made somewhere during a person's lifetime. The decision is often based on feelings, emotions, circumstances, past history, et cetera, and it's changeable. So why would the city council seek to replace the already existing present protections for all people with special protections for some people? Why would gender identity be more important than biology? Both are equally protected. In this country, we believe that everyone is created equal and is entitled to the same protections under the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Louisa Norris on West Olive. Born in Zealand, raised in Holland, so I consider myself a native. As I was coming here tonight across the Unity Bridge, and I thought to myself, "It's a little ironic that Holland calls it the Unity Bridge when really it's not." I say this because there's still a debate over whether or not we should protect LGBTQs from discrimination, from jobs, housing, and et cetera. The fact that this issue has been ongoing for nine years speaks volumes about what unity is not. Holland would like to think that we are inclusive and we welcome everyone, but the reality is, is this is not true. This would be true, though, if everyone would stay in the lane that Holland has decided that the people of race, gender identity, sexual orientation, or economic status should stay in. I have attended these meetings since January, and I've heard the heartbreaking stories of what it's like to be LGBTQ in this community and in this country. There are not very many of us here tonight that really know what it's like to be hated, treated less than, refused service, because we are all in that special lane that makes us feel comfortable and white. The Elliot Larson Act was brought up many times in the July meeting, that this should be enough for protection, but it should be pointed out that there is a ballot initiative being circulated in the state to change the language to include LGBTQ because it's not all-inclusive. Sadly, the legislature of Michigan doesn't want it out of committee, which in itself speaks volumes about our representatives. I'm asking you tonight to step out of the lane of privilege and pass this ordinance next week based on humanity. We are all created equal, regardless of one's gender identity, sexual orientation, race, or economic status, and we do not have the right to sit and judge whether one group or another gets to get in our lane. There is room for us all. Equal rights for us, for others, does not mean fewer rights for you. It's not a pie.
Thank you, Louisa. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Amy Stid. I live at two ninety-six West Nineteenth Street. And I also wanted to address the nondiscrimination ordinance. I want to encourage you, first of all, I read it, and and I thought it was really good, and it it talks about more than protection for LGBTQ people. It talks about not discriminating on weight, on age, on disability, on, you know, cognitive, all those things. And and it made me think that, you know- And, and it made me think that, um, you know, we need to be thankful for that, because there's not one of us here that someday won't be in a category that could be discriminated against. Many people, you know, say, "Well, we don't need this ordinance", uh, because they don't recognize the discrimination. And, and I just think they should be glad that we're implementing this to ensure that they have protections from acts of discrimination in the future. Lord knows, if we had to do weight, age, those kind of things and were discriminated against, I'd be in trouble. Some of the people that oppose the ordinance, uh, do it because it includes people from the LGBTQ community, which, uh, I feel they hide behind their faith practices. I feel they're cherry picking the definitions of sin and which sins they should feel, uh, that they should speak out against. And that just doesn't hold a lot of water, you know? If society supports denying members of basic rights and dignity on the basis of who we like and who we don't like, we're all in trouble and at risk of being excluded. This ordinance is a fair tool to use to keep society healthy and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Certainly. My name is Shelby Lynn Stoddard. I reside in Grand Rapids at 2110 Rowland Avenue, Southeast Apartment 103. I am thankful to be able to speak to you tonight. I'm here in support of the LGBTQ language in the ordinance that is being discussed. I think that I deserve equal rights and protection under the law and, um, that many of the religious objections that have been brought forth against the, um, language are personal opinions. I am, Baptists would, would acknowledge that I am a born-again Christian. I am saved by grace, God's grace, through faith. And there is nothing that anybody can do to change that. I am not damned, as some religious people would suggest. I am now a whole person. I am transgender. I am also lesbian. These are things that have taken me years to put together, to integrate into my life. And I would really like to see a, um, an atmosphere where my rights and protections are truly equal under the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Ben Martinez, 137 East 22nd Street. Um, I'm here also about the nondiscrimination ordinance. And as I said in the previous meeting, the only thing I have an issue with is the expression, uh, to expand what sex is, um, because of the public accommodation and public services. Now, um, there's been cases in Marion, Kansas, Olaf, Kansas, Denver, Colorado, San Antonio, Texas, uh, where this same change of language has occurred. And I just want to read what this says. It says, "How does this nondiscrimination ordinance affect against restrooms and changing facilities?" It says, "An individual's use of particular restroom or changing facility may arise in employment or public accommodations. It is unlawful discriminatory practice for, for someone to mandate that a person use a restroom or changing facility consistent with their biological sex rather than gender identity." You see, so my, my issue is this. If I see someone who goes into a restroom behind my nine or 10-year-old daughter, and they look like a man, it doesn't matter if they identify as a woman or not, because biologically they're a man. You know what I'm saying? And, and for me, I have to protect my children. And I have to protect my grandchildren. I have to protect those kids that go to my church, because I am a pastor. I have to protect, um, the kids in this community, because you're talking about Bowes Pool. You're talking about community, um, Holland Community Pool. You're talking about Collin Park. You're talking about the restrooms downtown. You're not just talking about, um, small business anymore. You're talking about public accommodations. You know, so, so you see where the issue lies, man, because, because, um, there's, we, we all know that there's been history of sex trafficking here in Holland. And I'm not saying that this community, um, you know, whoever's trying to push the ordinance allows this, but you never know, somebody with a twisted mind will come and say, "Hey, I feel like this. I'm gonna go in there, let me snatch this kid real quick." You know, so, so we need to, we need to really think about what we're doing, because this has happened in other cities. This is not the first time. Just because we're pushing it here in Holland, you know, this has happened around the country already. You know, so I'm just begging the city council, I'm asking you guys, please take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Amber Marie Collins. Currently, as of now, I live at 12126 Meadow Lane Court Department 2B on the north side of Holland. And I'm a behavior technician who works with autistic kids. And I'm a grad student with the University of Denver. I, I too am a transgender woman, and I would like to speak, to speak on the ordinance. The end of Animal Farm, as I'm sure all of you have read by now, says, "All, all men are equal, but some of, but some are more created equal than others." And I have listened to some of the comments tonight. Yeah. I can tell you what goes on in public bathrooms. I go in, I close the, close the door, I do my business, I wash my hands, and I get out. There have, there has not been a single issue of transgender people causing sexual assault or human trafficking in a public bathroom. Two, in terms of religious liberty. Why is, so, I'm just trying to figure out why some people's religious fre- freedom is more important than my ability to work at a job without wondering if I'm gonna get fired because of my gender identity. If my employer or supervisor gets a bug and dumps me, then I have no protection, even if I have a spotless rock, even if I work, even if I'm a rock star, and I have perfect attendance. Also, I have done the research as a grad student, and science abundantly says, 999 out of 1,000 studies, that the brains of transgender children are different from birth than, than the, than those of cisgender people. And no, this is not a slur. So my, and like I've said before, I have been considering moving to the city of Holland proper, but it's just really hard to do that when I have to live in fear that either my employer i- is going to dump me because I'm trans, or my landlord is, my landlord is going to dump me because I'm, I'm trans. You know, I would like to be able to have that, have the rock taken, taken all, taken away above my head just because I'm trans. And also, my final note is, I am also aware that some, some people think I, I practice a lifestyle. Yeah, because drinking five cups of coffee a day and, and pursuing my MSW, my B CBA, and a PhD in clinical psychology is horrible. Thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you, Amber. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Ruth James, and my address is 6221 144th Avenue, Holland, Michigan.
Could you step forward a little closer to the mic? I, I know I'm having difficulty hearing you, I'm not sure they'll be able to pick it up.
Okay, can you hear me now? Oh yeah, now you can hear me, because I can hear me.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Ruth James, and my address is 6221 144th Avenue in Holland. So, um, geez. Listening to people makes me think I want to add things to what I have prepared, so I'm gonna do that. I am not native to Holland. I'm from New York, and I'm of Jewish descent. And I'll tell ya, when I moved to Holland, I felt discriminated against because I'm not from Holland and because I'm not a Christian. And it's, sorry, it was sad. It was sad. Okay, so now I'll read what I was gonna say. All right, I'll speak up. Thank you to all of you who worked so hard to keep Holland the vibrant, thriving city it's become. I appreciate each one of you and those who do their due diligence and attend or listen to council meetings via Zoom. And I really do thank you for that opportunity, because that's how I listen to you. I recognize that it is the city council who determines what is best for the city of Holland. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have lived in Holland a long time, raised my four sons here, taught in two of its school systems, sat on a city commission, and I have worked at several nonprofits within the city. Since moving here, I've seen much growth and positive change in the community. These masks are tough. I'm here this evening in support of the proposed ordinance 25 to uphold the human rights of and prevent the discrimination against our LGBTQ community, and I have listened carefully to all the study sessions and meetings. Holland is rightfully proud of its history and traditions and welcomes people to town each year, sharing its hospitality with many. I personally believe it's time that Holland welcomes all the members of the city by providing them with the same privileged benefits that they hold dear, their First Amendment rights. After listening to several people express concerns about their religious freedoms at the August 5th meeting, and turning to a Bible for assistance, I read the words of Jesus. "Jesus preached a message of love and acceptance for all and of inclusion."
Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. And I do want to remember, remind members of the audience, uh, we would ask that you not, uh, comment or respond to anything that any of the speakers are saying. And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir, my name is Doug Pocketter. My address is 758 Apple Avenue here in Holland. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I personally am not convinced that homosexuality is something that people are born with, something that they are born with an orientation towards. Um, I also am a Christian. I do not believe that God hates homosexual people or transgenders or bisexual people. I believe that He loves all people. And I also believe that these practices are clearly condemned and shown to be morally wrong from scripture. And I fear that this, uh, decision, which by the way, I realized that wasn't on the agenda tonight, and I'm, I was uninfor- uninformed on that, but, um, I, I fear that this move away from, uh, scripture is making ourselves the moral authorities. And my fear then is, where does it stop? Where do the, where do the changes stop? Who decides what is right and wrong at that point? So, those are my concerns. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Dean DeRitter. My address is 16515 New Holland Street, Holland, Michigan. I've been living in the Holland area now for 73 years. And the comment I would like to make is there have been so many refugants to religion, especially Christian religion. And I would like to point out how often Christian religion has been wrong over the centuries. Look at Copernicus, Galileo. Quite often, they're 100 years behind science and social justice. And that's why I think it's so important for government, especially local government, to think for themselves and find justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Anne Hunrickson, 338 Royal Park Drive. There, there's this and there's that. I hope I can bring some semblance of reality in not just what people think. There is a situation with this ordinance, and I did talk to Keith about it today. The city of Holland, um, council voted to consider this proposal of anti-discrimination for the special interest group identified as sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. We are not against this group having protections from discrimination. We are not against the group. Um, we love our neighbors. It's unfortunate that people feel we don't. People have feelings, people have attitudes, and a government can, cannot control that. We hope for safety and well-being would be provided for everyone with respect and dignity. Everybody. That being said, we are against this current proposal ordinance, proposed ordinance becoming a law of our city for the following reasons. I hope I can get this in clearly to you. The Holland, um, ordinance language is recommended by the Michigan Civil Rights Commission, who in 2019 changed the word "sex" to "sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression." They, the compe- um, commission, endorsed the LGBT language by their own authorization and discretion for the purpose of what you're gonna send people to, investigating and discriminating, uh, discrimination infraction. It is acting as though it is law, but only in their own eyes. It has no legal backing in the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act because it has not come to the public vote. You're jumping the gun. What they want you to do is adopt what they recommend by their discretion. 2015 Attorney General Dana Nessel, openly a lesbian and very skilled attorney, nothing against being a lesbian, you know, I don't mean that, had participated in the lawsuit appealing to the Supreme Court in the same-sex marriage decision. She obviously influenced our Michigan Civil Rights Commission, expanding the language of the word "sex" and its meaning in 2019 when elected. Folks, the deck is stacked against an employer, public accommodation owner, any public service provider who operates their business from their faith in God. You've gotta make that decision, and you are influenced, and you've already biased yourself.
Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes.
Sorry, Anne, your time has expired. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Uh, yes, Lucy Evil, um, 13002 Blueberry Lane, Holland. I've been listening to the comments, you know, pro and against, and, um, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, um, you know, I'm, uh, Hispanic. I also have Indian blood. And yes... And yes, we have been discriminated against. And yes, we have been looked down on. You know, but we're all human. So, my culture is Hispanic. I grew up in a Hispanic home. My parents brought me up in a Hispanic culture. That doesn't make me any different than you who are Caucasian. So, what I don't understand is how come I don't have special rights? How come there's not an ordinance for me, you know, for my Hispanic background and my Indian descent? Shouldn't I have special rights too? You know, when is this going to stop? This is already, as my predecessor just said, this is already in the books. Everybody's equal. So, you have a complaint and you take it to the right authority, but why do we have to bring the hammer down in our own community? Why? When a cop stops me down the road and he looks at my record, he looks, oh gee, you haven't gotten a ticket in a year. You know what? I'm going to give you a warning. Education, please don't speed anymore. I go, oh, thank you. I'm so appreciative. So, they don't haul me to jail. They don't fine me five hundred bucks. They're considerate. They're kind. They educate me. Why can't we do that? Why can't we just educate? Why do we have to bring the hammer to anybody and everybody who they perceive that they're being discriminated against? I'm a registered nurse. I have a master's degree. I grew up in Texas. I had a whole bunch of coworkers who were my friends, and they were all homosexuals. I loved them. We got along. I work at Holland Hospital. I have coworkers. I have managers, directors who are homosexuals, lesbians. They're my best friends. Have they complained to me about being discriminated against? No. It's already in our community. They're all over the, working at Holland Hospital. They're all over the place. So, why change things? Why are we trying to bring a hammer to community that, okay, you're not perfect? We're not perfect, but let's be nice. Let's consider each other. Let's be friendly. Let's just educate. Why not? What is wrong with that? There's nothing wrong with that. So, why bring the hammer down? Why? There's already, we're already all equal in the eyes of God. We're all equal. You know, it's already in our state constitution and in our, you know, in our government. So, why? I don't understand why.
Mr. Mayor, that's three minutes.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Eric Postma, three-six-four Hamilton Drive. I was not planning on speaking tonight at all. Came straight from work. But listening to everybody, there's, the full discussion of this would take far more than three minutes, so I'll just bring up something that literally no one has. And that's one of the forgotten aspects of the First Amendment, which is freedom of association, which means I could do business with whom I want and someone else can, and so can anyone else. That means if somebody would like to not do business with left-handed gingers, I guess I'm out of luck. And I think that should be pretty much universal. It lets you know who the bad people are. That way, if somebody is being discriminatory, you can go, that person's a bigot. I'm not going there. I'll go to this guy instead. And it's very simple, and it weeds itself out very quickly. And then you're not trying to force people into your way of thinking. They will either come around or they will not. Trying to force people through force of law leads to exactly the kind of backlash that people have been so upset about lately. It leads to exactly, it creates more of the problem you're trying to prevent. That's why I don't remember who said this, but it was someone far wiser than I, a long time ago, said that the more laws you have, the less justice you have.
We would ask people to please not comment during the public comment period.
And it's something I think need to remember, along with the fact that these laws always have applications, have consequences that are not foreseen in the original language, may be entirely beyond the intent of the people who crafted the laws. They always go beyond what anyone initially says or thinks every single time. So, think about that before you decide to pass a law fixing something that, from listening to people, doesn't sound like it may or may not be much of an actual problem. And if it is a problem, like I said, where it is a problem will identify itself soon enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. And again, I would like to reiterate, please no reactions from the audience when anyone is speaking. We are very dedicated to civil discourse here, and we do want to make sure that everyone's opinion is respected. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Okay, my name is Raymond Reif-Schneider. I'm three-thirty-two West Thirty-first Street. I'm here because I don't understand why we need something like this. Couple of years back, I had twenty-one apartment units. I had every nationality, every race, sleeping together, mixing together, never had an issue. So, I don't know where this issue came from. It's absurd what we're trying to do here. Totally absurd. You know, when people move in together, that's their business, not my business. Don't have an issue with it. And this is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? And would you please state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Mary. My name is Sarah Janette. I use she/her pronouns. I live within the city limits of Holland, and I serve on the Board of Out on the Lakeshore at four-five-one Columbia Avenue. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to the importance of the nondiscrimination ordinance. I'm here to speak to you as a parent of kids in LGBTQIA+ community. I'm also on the leadership team of Gender Safe and, as I mentioned, the Board of Out on the Lakeshore. I'm caught off guard by the level of fear and misinformation that has been shared here regarding LGBTQIA+ people, particularly the improper focus on our transgender neighbors being a threat. The faux bathroom issue needs to end. It's important to know that there has never been an instance where a transgender individual who is using the bathroom aligning with their gender identity has caused threat or harm to another person. This is an unfounded fear. We have always used bathrooms with our transgender brothers, sisters, and non-binary siblings without even knowing it. Those endangered in the bathrooms are the transgender people themselves. As you can imagine, having heard the fears of the people that have spoken. Over the past five years, my experience as a mom has changed as I have learned that our kids were in the LGBTQIA+ community, simply because I hadn't considered the possibility. My husband and I learned to parent our children without the static of society getting in the way. We have taught our kids to be honest with themselves and with others, even if they're a societal fallout as a result. They are now branching off into adulthood on solid foundations. Our kids are deep thinkers. They look at the world with fresh perspectives, and they ask insightful questions. The city is infinitely better with them in it. They have strong work ethics and curious minds. They take care of and take pride in their things and their spaces. A landlord would be fortunate to have them as tenants. They are clean and respectful people, doing everything right. Our family has a long history in Holland, and to imagine our children being denied housing or employment within our city is beyond imaginable for me. Unfortunately, this is a possibility in their future without the protections the full language of the nondiscrimination ordinance provides. We're not here to change hearts and minds, but to model appropriate behavior. We are here to model the expectation of respect and protection for all people in the city of Holland. It takes nothing away from others except for the opportunity to do harm. The full language of this ordinance certainly doesn't take away religious rights and freedoms. We need to set an expectation for the people of Holland to treat their fellow humans with the same dignity and respect they themselves would like to be treated with by voting in favor of the nondiscrimination ordinance as it is currently written. Anything less is not enough. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda, the review of the agreement with the Outdoor Discovery Center Network for Sustainability Services. Mr. Van Beek?
Give me a second as we have some visitors that are going to come down and join us.
All right. Thank you. Do we want to take a couple of minute break?
No.
No, we don't need that much time. All right.
Unless you all need it.
I think I'm good.
Did the mayor look at you or?
Sorry, our guests, our speakers are on their way down, so it will be just another minute or two before they're here and ready to present. I think I see them. All right, we're back. Just a refresher, we are reviewing the agreement with the Outdoor Discovery Center Network in regard to sustainability services. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Let me just give a little context and background on this item. You will all recall, I believe, and if not, I'll remind you, that one of your priorities in your advanced session was talking about not just the community energy plan, but quite frankly, more broadly sustainability. And I'm just going to set the context that today, this is about sustainability. The budget that was presented to you and that you approved included an expanded investment in sustainability. Specifically, we have had a historic sixteen thousand dollar investment that we've contracted out with an individual in a couple of different roles historically, but it's been the same individual to do that sustainability education in our community. What we did, though, is we increased that by thirty-four thousand to do a total of fifty thousand in the budget for sustainability education. Thirty-four thousand dollars of that is taken from the BPW Regional Initiatives Fund, which you recall is taking some of the money that we get from increased sales of wholesale energy, not our local retail money, but our wholesale. And we wanted to take some of that money aside and, under my recommendation, specifically reserve that for different regional initiatives or moving something forward. As we looked at this through the budget and was recommended to you, we thought that we could do more in sustainability education. And we also really wanted to find a partner that we would do it larger than just the city boundaries, but do it more on the larger Holland-Zeland area as a regional initiative. So, this evening, we're excited about a partnership that we're recommending. It is drawn up in the form of an agreement. And at the end, I'll talk about kind of the process as I look around and kind of get maybe some thoughts and ideas from council. Mark Vanderpluig is going to first speak about the history that I already said a few things about, so I'll say, Keith, you stole all my thunder. And then after that, Dave and Joe from the Outdoor Discovery Center are going to talk about what they hope to do should you approve this agreement. So, Mark, first kick me in the knee.
So, come on, I'm one of the best guys.
No, come on, just get started.
Inside joke from a meeting this afternoon. So, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. So, kind of off the bat, I mean, I want to say that the city really has always had a rich tradition of smart thinking, you know, in regards to policy and operations and triple bottom line approaches. I think that that can go back decades. We were always looking to do things smartly and not just from, you know, what's the best, you know, lowest cost approach, but what's the best way to do it kind of holistically. But it really wasn't until two thousand five, twenty, you know, twenty-ten in that period when we started to name what we were doing, you know, and the buzzword was sustainability. Okay? And we all kind of glommed onto that, and that was really kind of the umbrella that started to shape a lot of the endeavors that we're doing. So, much of the early emphasis of sustainability functions in the city was on energy efficiency projects such as an energy conservation and efficiency plan that we had for city facilities and operations. We did that in two thousand nine. I can tell you that Soren was very pleased, and he followed that plan, and he was really happy about saving money. And that was all, of course, kind of really goose up when we got our funding after the last big recession. And I know that we, at the time, we worked with Keith when he was at Ottawa County, and we got some good funding, and we did a lot of good projects at that time, too. And around that same time period, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, there developed a large kind of community discussion, and many of you know it well, kind of in regards to the future of the DeYoung Power Plant. Okay? And HBPW and City Council really, you know, discussed a lot, the options of that. Remember the coal or no coal discussions, you know, remember everything that goes with it, carbon sequestration, what are we going to do? We're going to have pilot projects here, et cetera. Lots of sustainability discussions with that. At about that same time, then, the SUSCOM, our Sustainability Committee, was created really kind of to take that, a lot of that discussion by the bull, by the horn, so to say. They quickly kind of jumped into a planning process that really kind of culminated with City Council's adoption of the CEP in two thousand eleven. The CEP task forces were kind of created and brought up to speed in two thousand twelve. And a lot of that work obviously continues to date. SUSCOM continued to drive a lot of the related policy discussions and sustainability thinking. And there was a lot of increasing permeation of that thinking into operations, both at the city here with the many departments and, I believe, with the BPW, too. So, it was starting to mainline into what we're doing. Shortly after that, you'll all, many of you will remember the Georgetown University Energy Prize and that, and when that arrived on the scene. And that kind of quickly consumed a lot of the oxygen in the whole sustainability kind of discussion. And it was all hands on deck for a couple of years as we were really kind of trying to drive that program and win the prize. And I think it turned out there wasn't much of a prize at the end of that whole process, but it was kind of, it was a very good process to begin with, or in spite of that. And I think that we can all be very proud of that. After that, the SUSCOM, and you'll see kind of a theme here, Sustainability Committee was driving a lot of this stuff. But they started to develop their framework thinking, okay? And we still use that today in the various components, which were increasingly applied to large capital projects that we do. And I know that whenever we do a big street project or if it's a park project or something like that, Aaron Thalenwood, who's kind of our sustainability coordinator, he meets with like Brian White and Andy Kenyon to really kind of look at whatever the project may be from a sustainability point of view and not just, don't just base the decisions based on economics, but also kind of look at it from an environmental point of view. Look at it from a social justice point of view and really kind of look at the whole project. And that really is informative to make the best decision and in making best recommendations for you, council, to make decisions on. Also, around that time, the Holland Hope College Sustainability Institute was created, was brought online, which among many things, really kind of worked to disseminate sustainability educational content to the city, to the larger community, and with many of its partners. And really kind of a signature program they have is the Living Sustainability Along the Lakeshore Program. Holland Energy Fund and the Hope, and the Home Energy Retrofit Program, soon after, arrived on the scene, as well as all the many community energy plan initiatives ramped up and continue to be worked on. Two, three years ago, we, you know, we really kind of jumped into solid waste recycling as the new city residential contract was being debated. And we're still, you know, looking to get grants, and hopefully we'll get a nice big grant this fall, and we can do some recycling programs with that. Sustainability educational component, and Keith responded to this, a couple of years ago, we brought Michelle Gibbs, who works for Hope College and was the main person for the Sustainability Institute. We brought her in-house and to do the sustainability educational items as a city employee. And I really have to say, she's done an outstanding job, an outstanding job with really kind of a bare bones budget. And I think that we should be very proud that we, that she's been associated with us and has been an employee and done a great job with the community, which all kind of brings us to right now. So we're now kind of at this evolutionary cusp in the program, so to say, with sustainability education and programming efforts to vastly kind of broaden and deepen the message in the city and in the broader community and along with programming by partnering with the ODC. So the ODC's breadth in this community is exceptional. It's solid. It's vast. And certainly as a staff member, I'm just speaking for myself, really supportive of them coming into this effort. And we wish them the best as they hopefully get the contract approved and can move forward to take sustainability to the next step and beyond. So. Yeah, so really just kind of wanted to paint a real quick timeline of where we've been. That's just a nutshell, folks. So, I mean, you know the things that are going on, but we're very proud to have these guys here.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Keith. My name is Joe Sikma. I am the Nature Rich Community Manager for the ODC. Here with my boss, Dave Nitre, our COO. And we are very excited to discuss this potential contract, which we see as a win-win opportunity for our organization and the City of Holland. For the City of Holland, we see an opportunity to continue to grow upon and build that strong foundation that Mark has outlined, but to do so using the capacity and the resources and expertise that our organization has to offer. Specifically, some of those resources are our staff and expertise that they bring, our existing infrastructure, our ability to secure additional funding and resources through the unique channels and relationships that we maintain, and our rich history with the community. If you look at a contract and see what we're discussing here, some of those key goals and the scope of services that we are proposing would be to develop an education plan that addresses both organizations and residents within our community, to continue to support and develop the sustainability plan that the city has, and to serve as a resource to city leadership on developing trends and topics in sustainability. For our own organization, we see an opportunity here to live into our mission. If you're not familiar with that, the mission of the ODC is to connect people with the outdoors through outdoor education for the benefit of wildlife and conservation of the natural world. And so obviously, there is a connection to sustainability. It's something that's close to our heart and we're looking forward to a chance to address that with the city and for the city at such a crucial and pivotal time for us right now. Anything to add?
No, you've covered it well. We'd like to answer any questions if there are any about the contract.
Questions from council, comments? Yeah, Lynn?
Could you run through those? I got developed a plan and the scope of services, thank you.
Yeah, so it's to establish a sustainability education plan that engages both organizations and residents. The second high level piece, and there's some sub bullets underneath there, too, in the contract. But the second high level is to support the city's sustainability program development and operations. And then the third high level piece would be to serve as a resource for city leaders on emerging sustainability topics.
Other questions or comments from council? Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
First question to you is how far and wide are we talking about the sustainability plan? Do you plan to include other communities as well? And then part two is to Keith, our city manager, is how does our new city assistant manager, I believe is the title, going to be worked into this project?
Great question. So in terms of scope, our organization is obviously an organization that has a footprint broader than just the City of Holland. However, in this agreement, those three primary goals are all geared towards city outcomes that we'd be working on. So those resources would be allocated to meet those city objectives that we developed with city staff. Our hope would be, though, to use our broader footprint to leverage those resources into greater action and to maybe also spur some other local units to be as forward-thinking as the city has been.
Mike?
Keith, we're at a tad bit of a disadvantage. We don't have the contract.
Yep, so as you know, I'm not, you don't see me right now. I'm on vacation. So, yes, we were making final changes on that, so I know that's not in your, so we'll put that out. It'll be made available. It's a relatively straightforward contract. Joe made it, did a really good job of talking on the high levels. There are bullets underneath all of that. I will let you know that outside of that, basically, it's a $50,000 a year annual contract with a three-year term with an out clause and basically all the other things that you would typically see in one of our standard agreements. Quarterly payments of $12,500. Scott, if I could, circle back to your question. Yeah, I view this as a continued kind of process in a direction. So as it relates to the Assistant City Manager position that we have, obviously, and I've communicated to you all that we're, because of COVID and some uncertain economic times that I think we're going into, I haven't been in a hurry to hire that position. I think we have some opportunities to look at that, that I'm still working on and will eventually, you know, come back with that plan. As it relates to this, though, one of the things that I'm just going to highlight, a perspective and probably eventually a recommendation from me. Mark did a good job of talking about the Sustainability Committee historically. And I think what you've seen, and quite frankly, I've taken direction from all of you as a priority, is like a lot of things in the Community Energy Plan and kind of the tactics that we've used, is we've moved something from kind of outside the city giving and we've operationalized those things and we've made it really a core of the city. And the designation of an Assistant City Manager position that does have two responsibilities in economic development, but also in sustainability, I think speaks to that. So what we're looking to do is operationalize that so that you would have a high-level position that would be in charge of sustainability. But yet what we're looking to do and what I think this contract does a particularly good job of doing is it recognize a very strong resource in the community that would then in effect be the hands and feet of the city through that high-level position to coordinate those resources. And I think we just leverage expertise and things that the ODC is also, is already working on. And I just think it's really, quite frankly, not to be cute about it, but it speaks to sustainability. It speaks to that we're actually investing in and being partners with a great organization that we have a good track record for.
Any other comments? Yeah, Dave?
One quick one. Is there going to be a relationship or is there a connection between the Sustainability Commission and the services that they'll be providing? So I think education, if I recall correctly, at one point, that was, that was one of the goals of the Sustainability Commission. So I'm just curious about what, if any, relationship there is there.
I think there could be. I think the Sustainability Committee is kind of in one of those transitionary times. And again, I would point to that we're kind of transitioning kind of an outside resource into an outside resource and an internal, an internal direction in that high-level position of the Assistant City Manager. So quite frankly, I kind of see some of that transition, perhaps moving in that direction. And partly, I think that's just recognition, again, of it's a day-to-day, integrated with all of our operations, which I think is a good transition. And it's not a negative commentary on the Sustainability Committee. But at some point, it really speaks to the dynamic nature of where we're going. Now, how that all plays out in time, obviously, we're, like a lot of things, sometimes you figure that out as you go and especially right now, we're figuring that out as we go.
Thank you.
Nikki?
So this relationship with ODC will be perhaps through that newly hired person, but right now will be, how will they be integrated? Do they report to somebody or how does that work?
So right now, the integration as that other position is not filled. Would continue through Community and Neighborhood Services. Ultimately, Aaron Thalenwood involved, but I see it more of a direct report to Mark Vanderpluug. And then I'll say I'll take an inordinate and more direct interest in this as it's getting off the ground and that eventually it would be a direct report to the Assistant City Manager.
And so the Assistant City Manager, should this occur, who has the responsibility of economic and sustainability? This will help provide that sustainability component. Their efforts will be largely provided by ODC and come through that relationship. Would that be correct?
Yes, I view it more as the ODC is our resource. So there are some things, and you'll see the full contract next week that has all the bullets underneath it. But Joe did a great job of kind of highlighting kind of the broad initiatives. So I think education, you're going to see more. They're doing the education. We're monitoring it. They're reporting back on kind of what their reach is and what they're talking about and we'll definitely be monitoring and overseeing it, correct? And then there's other things where we know our operation and we're saying, I'll use a current example. I talked to you last week about the electric vehicle that we're experimenting with in transportation. Maybe there's something where at, you know, if this was two months from now, I'd probably be calling Dave and Joe and say, hey, like, what do you know? Can you do some investigation for us? Can you do some research? And we'd like you to sit at the table with our group that's taking a look at that from an operational perspective that maybe you can also bring in your point of view. So those are the types of things, Nikki, the way that I view it. So it's not that Assistant City Manager that's doing the work, you know, ground to ceiling, but that it's a resource that we can call upon.
Can you do this anyhow? You do education and research on that. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments from council? Yes, Mr. Van Beek?
So the final thing that I'm just going to ask and kind of look around, and we don't make final decisions, right, in study session? But we, I would suspect that next week, which is where we would, I would otherwise ask this to be entertained, might be one of those weeks that we're here for a while. So while I'm going to be here and I'm happy to be here and we can put this on regular agenda, I'm also looking at comfort level of either putting this on consent agenda or if not on consent agenda, maybe not asking Dave and Joe to be here for
Three hours?
Three hours before they actually present the item. So call that your city manager looks ahead a little bit.
I would suggest, since we don't have the contract in front of us, it'd be hard for us to give you an answer. So if you want to put this off until the next business meeting because of what potentially is going to happen, I've got no problem with that. In fact, I would suggest that.
Does that create a timing issue?
I would not suggest, because we haven't seen it, to put it on the consent at this point. That's putting the cart before the horse a little bit as far as I'm concerned. Not saying that there's anything wrong with it, but if we're going to be, in essence, giving you a nod, I'd like to know what I'm giving you a nod on.
Can we, I'm going to ask if, I'm going to negotiate a little bit. How about this? How about if we plan on putting it on regular agenda? We'll put out the agreement in the packet. And if you think that you have any questions that would be particularly for either Dave or Joe or ODC, if you let me know, and then I'll be able to answer anything in the meeting itself next week. And then we can do it in, you know, in regular agenda if possible. My guess is I'll be able to answer any questions that you might have. And again, I totally understand, Mike, I'm certainly not pushing back, but I think there is an element where I would like to get this moving forward and I think ODC and Joe is really eager to get moving also. And I know they've already done a good amount of work, but it's just, I totally understand them not doing too much work when they don't know how it's going to end on the other side.
Fair enough, and I'm not, don't get me wrong, I just, I don't.
No, you just haven't put your eyes on it.
So, yeah, that sounds fair enough.
Plus, we both have masks on, so you can't even see if we're good intentioned or not right now.
I can tell by your eyes.
It's so hard to tell.
Well, I would also say that it would be great, just in case there are questions, not that you can't, there can't be in this communication, but I feel like if there, if I'd like to hear directly from them, if you could be available. I guess we can just sort of play it by ear, but whether or not you attend next week's meeting, but there may be some questions that I'd prefer to hear from you, so.
I think a couple of things. If you see something, I always love having questions before a meeting instead of at the meeting. Not because, but it's, I can give better answers if I know what the question is ahead of time. So if you have something, and then that way I can make sure that I integrate that. And then, of course, you always have the option of tabling at the meeting next week also.
I was going to make a suggestion. I'm a newbie. I'm not nearly as seasoned as you are, Mike, of doing the, of doing the reverse of that. And that is having it on the consent agenda, having us take a look at it and any one of us can pull it off of the consent agenda or make the, and let staff know ahead of time. Because as you said, it's always nice to know for staff, especially if we're going to be pulling something off the consent agenda, what the reason for that is and what questions we may have so staff can be prepared for that. That if we do see something that we, when we're looking at the contract, we go, no, I think I want to pull this off consent, that we've got the ability to do that. I'm thinking that way may be a little cleaner, but I'll defer to your, I'll defer to your wisdom.
I was considering that. It doesn't not make sense, but the potential of getting complacent because of what's going on next week, I would just assume, especially since we haven't seen it again, put it in the regular agenda. Put the questions out there ahead, give them a fair chance. That'll help make the decision whether we need to have these gentlemen here or whether they want to be here, knowing what the questions are. But I think for the sustainability, I think for everything else that's going along with this, if there's going to be any discussion once we finally see the contract, then I'd like to have that opportunity and not take the chance that somebody's going to forget to pull it off.
Don't, yeah, don't get used to this, but I'm going to defer to your wisdom.
Wow.
Thank you.
So if we could, I'm going to play conductor here for a second. What I hear is that we're going to put it on regular agenda. I'm going to ask Matt to help me actually with this, to make sure that Cinca knows that, since I'm not going to see Cinca until next week, Monday. So to put it on regular agenda. I'm also going to ask Matt to have Cinca send out the agreement to you, quite frankly, before this weekend, so that you have additional time with it. I would ask if you have a question, send it to us ahead of time. It doesn't preclude you from asking questions next week. But I think particularly in this instance, it'd be great to know ahead of time. And then I will communicate with Joe and Dave leading into Wednesday, as if there is anything and we're going to try to lean on not having them be here longer than what they need to be next Wednesday night, if that's okay. And obviously, next Wednesday is just a different type of meeting. Normally, this is a little bit outside of the norm. It doesn't happen very often. We'll do fine. Sound okay with everyone?
Yep, that sounds good.
Great, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe and Dave.
Next item, and we are right on track, 615 Housing Policy Discussion. Reviewing the Ottawa County Housing Next material and housing development. Reviewing the Ottawa County Housing Next material and Housing Development Support Documents. Mr. Van Beek, as soon as you're done sanitizing the tables there for us.
I think you guys are up first. All right, so, I'm gonna do one of those context and introductions first, and then we have great people to take it away that you'd rather hear from than me. So, an intro of why, and the history of these documents. You'll recall that, man, how long has it been, probably two years, at least two years we've been having the discussion, it's been kind of emerging. These documents were something that I think have been in front of you probably three times total so far. And the last time that, that they were before you, we really recommended at that point, from a staff perspective, to not adopt them. And what we said is, okay, this is kind of starting to emerge, where you're giving us an idea, we're giving you something to react to. But we really wanted to try these out, if you would, in a trial-type situation with some projects that we knew were on the horizon, were coming forward. Some of those projects have come forward, and I'll let you know from a staff perspective that the elements that we've had discussions with you and that are representative in this were helpful. There also have been other projects that we hoped were going to be on the table at this point, that haven't gotten to that point so far. But that's okay, too, that's kind of the nature of development, just takes time. All kinds of development takes time, not just affordable housing development. You're gonna hear from us tonight that there have been other groups that have working on this, the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, and Mark Cornelis and Mark Vanderpluug are gonna talk about that. Ryan Kilpatrick is here, and he's gonna answer any questions that you have about these documents, too, from his perspective. But he's also gonna talk about what's happening more regionally, and at the county, and some documents also that the Ottawa County has put out that I think are solid and positive, and quite frankly, it's also a nod to us because a lot of those documents that you're gonna see, they're gonna look pretty familiar because they're ones that we've had in place for a period of time. Part of the discussion that I think we're gonna, we're leading towards, too, is that we think that it's time not to just hold these documents, but that we're moving in the direction, that we're recommending that you adopt these documents. And they're documents, and it's policy, and in the format that I would describe as not letting perfect be the enemy of good. And I think these documents are, it's time to have these in place to make sure that staff can continue to use these as a direction, that staff can continue to use these to move these discussions and these priorities of council forward, and yet realizing that, if I could channel my former council member, Brian Lynn, you know, sometimes policies are, are those things where you adopt something in a point in time, and you go, this is it, and then something changes a little bit, and then you find yourself going, well, we adopt this policy, but we really wanna do this thing that's outside of the policy. I think you're gonna hear tonight that we're trying in this to not put too fine of a point on everything. Because we think that this is an area where actually too fine of a point actually can cause problems, and not be helpful. We, we think that these documents, there's a lot of good minds that have put into it, and it's gonna move the discussion forward. So I said a lot, but first, what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask Mark Cornelis, I think primarily, to go through the conversations of the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, which I think has made some nice improvements to the document.
All right, thank you. Yes, as, as was introduced, the document made its way to the Neighborhood Improvement Committee about a year ago. A couple of you sitting here were a part of some of those meetings, and we were meeting bi-weekly at that time. I think in large part because this felt like a, a task that the, that the Neighborhood Improvement Committee could kind of sink its teeth into and, and, you know, move forward. So, they spent a good amount of time at about four or five meetings in a row between August and November. And, you know, there's three, there's three kind of set aside, three standalone documents that make up the packet. There's the policy document, there's kind of the guidelines document, and then there's the rubric, which we now call the assessment tool. And the Neighborhood Improvement Committee kind of honed in on the, the tool, because that's kind of where the rubber meets the road, and, and I think it's fair to say the other two documents were solid, and, and, not, not that the other one wasn't, but the other one was where I think there was some work to kind of operationalize it, make it, make it perhaps a little bit more understandable to the non-development experts, and that kind of fit the bill for the Neighborhood Improvement Committee. But in, in brief, the committee was highly supportive of, of the documents as a whole. They appreciated the incentivization of affordable housing in such a way that it kind of allowed for the likely development of kind of improved neighborhoods, neighborhoods that kind of had walkability and, and mixed use and those sorts of things. It's kind of all built into, into how the document is, I think is intended to be used, and, and others can maybe speak to that better than I can. So the committee was highly supportive of the documents. And again, honing in on the, the assessment tool portion, really, all they did, there was really no change to the intention or the major scope of, of the package. It was more of a simplification, I think, of how that assessment tool would, would be able to work. So some items were eliminated that were kind of givens, they wouldn't, that the development wouldn't have gotten to, for instance, the Planning Commission or to CNS without those pieces even being present or being a part of the package. So, we decided to kind of pull those out for simplification. There were three or four elements in the, in the original rubric that kind of relied on some data that really doesn't exist, in terms of, of, and, and really, for that to be a part of the packet, we would really need some direction from council, such as what are the, what is the desired mix of affordable housing in a particular neighborhood? Not just citywide, but in Holland Heights versus the West Side, versus any, any portion of the city. There were some, there was some built-in language around that, which we didn't, we didn't really have a way to score that because we don't know what the desired mix is in those particular neighborhoods, without, without more work and, without more conversation. So I think it might make sense down the road to build those back in, but we didn't think it made sense to leave those in and, and have it be a usable tool. Yeah, I think I will, that's kind of, so what's in your packet is a document, it's, it's all three documents with comments on the right, kind of indicating where, from since the last time you've seen it, where, where some of the more significant changes have been made. So, I'm not gonna go over all those changes, I'm just, I'll be here if there's specific questions about, about any other particular changes.
Thanks, Mark. Mark? Questions, comments from council? Yes, Dave?
Just wanted, Mark, to your last statement about what the desired mix of affordable housing is, is the desire to, to have an idea of that relative to the whole city? Or is that a neighborhood-specific, as you see it, consideration? In other words?
I might say both.
Okay, okay.
But again, I think, when the Neighborhood Improvement Committee was looking at it, and some staff conversation, I just, I think that the, the conclusion was, we probably didn't know the exact answer to that question, and, and we're looking for some direction. It's gonna be in the tool, if we're gonna, if we're gonna assess a, a development, a proposed development around that, we need to know more from, you know, hypothetically, it could be work that the Neighborhood Improvement Committee does, but I think ideally, it would come from this group, you know, what, what would that look like? What is the desired mix, so.
Yeah, I guess you could, that is a tough one, because you could, you could model it after a, you know, a philosophy, or there may be other circumstances that are neighborhood-specific that would skew that one way or another. So, it seems to me like that's a little bit of a fluid thing.
It, it may be, it's more than just a balance, then, you know, dividing up the city into census tracts or block groups or whatever, and look, and trying to achieve some balance. I mean, that's one way to look at it, but I think that's an oversimplification, there's a lot.
Oh, Mike will be happy to give you direction on that.
Yes, Mr. Trethuie with an answer.
As a matter of fact, no. Dave's got a very valid point there, and as you were saying, that I'm thinking, every two years, there's a potential that there's different makeup up here. And the person representing that specific word right now may be entirely different the next time. So, to have this body, it would be a snapshot to tell you what they want right now. But if this is gonna be sustainable, and, and in the future, it's going to have to be, as Dave said, the fluid mechanism to be able to take the pulse of the community, have the idea, people like Ryan, and have your crystal ball, I mean, it's that simple.
Which, if I would connect it to anything, don't let perfect be the enemy of good, I think ultimately, that was my short way of saying, at some point, like, what would be involved with constructing that? And then it would be, start to be questionable as soon as after you constructed it. I think the, the good feedback and discussion of Nick that was aligning with how staff was feeling about it is that it would be best if we pulled that out, and there's still plenty of flexibility and possibility for not only staff to do a review of projects, but then very much to involve council in all of those, and making good decisions based upon substance that we have in these documents.
Other questions, comments? Yeah, Lynn?
So I, I did wanna respond to you two also, but before I forget my, my questions about just logistical questions. So, and this looks great. Like, I can, I've sat at that table talking about this for a couple of years, too, so this, I really like the way it has, it has, you've done a really great, the Nick has done a really, and the staff has done a really nice job in, 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 you know, I think it's, I think it's what they, what we wanted to see, so I appreciate that. So I'm just thinking about how operationally this uses, I, this is used, I can't remember who does the actual scoring. Is that the developer, or is that staff?
Yeah, staff. So, so the way it's really kind of envisioned, it would be a mixture of CNS staff, I think along with the city manager, and probably the finance director. You know, physical aspects of the development, that's kind of more in CNS's kind of point of view, and financials components would be more city manager, finance director. But it's, it's really kind of envisioned, it would be, you know, those two teams really kind of reviewing it and scoring it, and, and then sharing that, and, and using it as a guideline in the evaluation of that incentive request.
Okay. So, and this may just be a matter of changing the maximum or the score that, that allows you to be considered for incentives? Because if you do maximum points for questions two through 10, it's 24. And so you actually don't have to have any, any affordable housing in your, in your development, and you can still get incentives. And I think that the, that the motivation for this was to encourage more, more affordable housing. So, I'm, I'm concerned about that. So, it may be just a matter of shifting the number of points to 20, to 26, or 28, or something like that, so that, so that we get the result that we really want, which is a mixed, mixed development.
Can I, can I, I wanna, I wanna make sure I understand what, what you're saying with that. So, if I'm understanding you correctly, are you saying that if there's not an affordability component, you wouldn't be interested in providing incentives? So if there's a project that's a, that's an otherwise a, a great project, but not, but doesn't have an affordability component, you would see that as one that we would not be willing to, the way I look at it is, invest in with incentives to the?
So at this point, this tool does not get us to, to affordable development, because people can skip question one entirely. So if I had one or the other, I would say, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, okay. I just wanna make sure I understand that.
If there's a way that we can mix, I mean, I think the, and, this is good, so I don't wanna say that I'm, that I'm, that I'm having an issue with the way this is set up, necessarily, because I, I, I hear what you're saying, Keith. The incentives, I, I think that, I don't think there, I think there's, we can use the incentives as often as we want, it's just the appetite of the council in, in, in giving tax credits, right? Or tax abatements. What I'm concerned about is that at some point, we're gonna say, you know what? We've done enough tax abatements, and then we have an affordable development on the table, and we say, well, we've done enough. So, I, I'm worried if, that if we don't, if we don't bake into this more encouragement for, to include a develop, to include affordable development, or affordable units in residential developments, we're not gonna get them.
Well, you know, in a long, that's the same vein, as I'm looking at this, number six with a sustainability component, zero to two points. So you may not need, and here we have this big push with the Second Assistant City Manager, and the agreement with ODC, and our own internal, right now, SUSCOM, who helped, you know, gave information, and, you know, John, and you all crafted this. And with all our interest in it, you don't really, you could gain your points without having any sustainability components to it at all. And is that what we want, too? So how do you, how do you do this? How do you have the affordability component, the, a little bit of sustainability thrown in, and still reach a point goal?
So, this is a great conversation, exactly what I wanted to have the conversation about. And I might say, too, I might say some unpopular things with some of you right now. Which is okay, I hope. So first, I will point out, Lynn, I understand where this started, started from, at least for some people, right? But I think actually, the language that we were very careful in outlining here is really housing at all price points. And while there's definitely an understanding, and you can, and it's in here that it's affordable, this isn't, isn't and never was called the Affordable Housing Support Policy. So, quite frankly, we've had some discussion. I hear what you're saying, and I understand it, because I think we find ourselves at this point in time, at least where that's, and you'll see in here, it's an identified gap that we have in housing right now. We also, it's not called the Affordable Housing Support Policy. We've had discussions, quite frankly, that it's like, well, there'd be no way for us if we use this more as a rubric, which was one of the reasons we changed it from a rubric, and more as an assessment tool. Where if there was one element at any given point in time, if you didn't hit anything in that element, well, then you, then basically you were like, well, you, sorry, we can't give you this incentive. And maybe it hits a lot of other really important things that the city's looking for in a particular neighborhood, or another gap, or just something. So, one, I would say, it's not the affordable housing. We know that that's kind of, you know, what probably caused us to have this discussion initially, and I think it still stays alive. But I would also point to, it's not a rubric, so even the language that you see here, and I even get a little bit uncomfortable when you start saying, well, this one is worth six to eight points, and this one is only worth zero to two points, and all those types of things. We're calling it an assessment tool, because like in the language, city staff and council can use this as an assessment tool for evaluating proposed development projects. So, I would suggest, and I would actually encourage council, to not think of it, 23, and then you get this, 21, you get this. But, it's something that moves us, where we're evaluating these things. Staff will get better at kind of having consistency in how we evaluate. So there's something more substantive than when council is making these decisions on these projects. So there's something more substantive than when council is making these decisions on these projects. Particularly because I don't view a lot of these tools, and it talks about layering incentives, where it's not just that, okay, you get the incentive or you don't get the incentive. It might be the level of incentive you might get depending on how you're hitting some of those goals. Not only in the city, but quite frankly, sometimes it might be, hey, this is perfect for this neighborhood. But that same project may not be perfect for another neighborhood in another situation. So I get that there is some element. And as my good friend, council member Corbin, who likes a little bit more, like, this is, I, I'm going to say it's intentionally retains a little bit of fuzzy, you know, not exactness, because I think it's better that way, quite frankly, is, is the perspective that staff has.
So I guess I would argue that we, we don't seem to have trouble with other price points. You know, that isn't really the issue. We have, we have, our real, our, the real challenge we have is that affordability 80% and below. So if there's a way that we can proactively encourage developers to choose that as an option, maybe this isn't the tool that we use to do that, but the, a bigger conversation or an ongoing conversation is, what do we actually need to say to developers to get them to, to do what we want them to do? Which is to include, which is to include affordable units within their market rate and other developments. So I, that, that's kind of where I'm headed there. I think, we, I think we need to figure out a way to do that.
I want to, before, before you speak, Scott, I just, I want to respond to that. I think that this tool actually would help me with that, because I can look at the categories that are here and go, they're hitting high numbers in, in the affordable housing category. They may, they may be hitting things other places as well, but I'm going to be able to see from this tool, not only the overall score, because I'm, I'm assuming we're not going to get from staff a sheet of paper with one big number on it. You know, that, oh, you hit a, you hit a 26 on this, that means that we get this. We're going to, we're going to see how they, how they arrived at that number. And we have the ability to be able to say, yeah, you did get 26 here, but there isn't anything in the, in affordable. And we really do think that, that there, an affordable component is, is nice here, would be nice with this particular project. And what I'm, what I'm looking at this from, and what I'm focusing on is, this is the framework or guideline. And it does help us be able to assess projects against one, against one another. And no two development projects, just like no two pieces of real estate are exactly the same, but at least it helps us in a variety of areas, be able to do, to do some comparison. And I know when I'm looking at, at these, when they're coming back, I'm going to be looking going, how'd they do in this category, or did they get all of their points in some other spot? That's going to help me be able to make a decision, how much am I interested in investing in this particular project with incentives? Yeah?
Well, go ahead, Scott.
I, if I can just jump, can I just?
Let me call on people.
One thing I would say is, I hear what you're saying, Lynn. I will, I will definitively say we've had conversations about this as staff. Moving this from kind of a draft tool that we can kind of share with people, but it's like it's draft, it's not really adopted. There is no question from staff perspective, that if you put, we're adopted this as a policy, it increases our ability to encourage developers to consider affordable components within their developments. Because it moves you guys from having a discussion about something to saying, you can get this level of incentive, right? But you can get this level of incentive if you have an affordable component in it. And so adopting something like this is, we firmly believe is a, is a step forward towards what you're speaking in favor of, from our belief.
By that it's a, that it's a step in the process. Is, you know, if we can agree that there's, there are some things that need to be addressed. Because I don't, I actually don't, I mean, it may be because it's written down on this paper, you can have that conversation. It's, it's the actual getting people to do what we want to do.
And that's always going to be difficult, right? Because ultimately, it's a free market system and...
Without actually saying, well, it's free market, except we do control the incentives. So we can control them a lot or a little. And this is, this is, you know, we're, we're, we're taking, this is sort of a baby step into that, where we're saying, here, this is kind of what we want to do, but, you know, these incentives are still available to everyone regardless. And, and this doesn't necessarily encour, I, I mean, I'm saying, I'm repeating myself, so I'm, I'm going to stop, yeah.
And I do, I understand, or I, I mean, I, I see that it's a starting point, and it does clarify things in many ways. I still think, you know, you have the affordable housing, I think with sustainability, eh, we do have that right to say, we want some kind of component. I mean, it's not zero to two, it should be one anyhow. And, and, and as it comes to the developer, as it comes through whatever planning commission or, they can say that, and I see that it, this has that guideline. But I want it to happen. I mean, I do want, I, we, we believe in this, we're saying, you know, so I'm talking about sustain, sustainability and energy and all this kind of stuff. We need to, you know, walk the talk. And we need to actually have that happen in some form. I mean, you can't have a, a new housing development, whether it's affordable or a different income level, be entirely, you know, with the roof and everything, but you, you can get there.
Real quickly, of all the pieces of the, of the document that I had any touch in editing, it was the scoring tool that I was the least confident was in the right spot. So I'm assuming that that's going to need some attention down the road. After two or three attempts, we may need to nudge it one way or the other, to kind of hit that sweet spot.
And as I say, the content of the council changes every once in a while. We just want this to go forward, that's a, something we need to do. Thank you.
Scott, you've been very patient.
Yes, he has. I apologize, Scott.
Did you want to talk?
No, I, I guess when we brought this topic up, probably a couple of years ago, and, and because we were having a lot of these different questions coming at us and no way of really calibrating it in a way or evaluating it. And a matrix was, some part of my recommendation was, because that's the work I deal with every day. I do threat, risk, and vulnerability assessments, and I score hazards all the time, and I rate those hazards to one another. But that doesn't mean on that hazard that I ignore one over the other just because it has a higher rating. I use the resources that are available to me to augment or to mitigate that hazard. And I would say, suggest the same way. Housing is, we have a scoring tool here that helps us identify what our needs are. But then how do we apply those incentives accordingly, when we do have them? Not all the time we're going to have these incentives. They, they come and go. So, but how we apply them accordingly, I think is the most important part of it. So I, I think we do need a rubric like this. We might be able to weight something a little bit higher, so it gets a little bit better score, if that's what we desire, if we want affordable housing. But we need something like this to get, get us to the end goal. Plus, it keeps us off in the same conversation. You say something, I say something, the next meeting we say something differently. And next thing you know, we've scored it in our heads differently, where we put it to paper. We have something of value in front of us to look at. And we can say, that's why we came up with those numbers. So I think it's a good tool. But where I do have a real concern is the difference between policy and guidelines. And Mr. Van Beek and I have had some discussions about this recently. If, if we have a policy that says, you know, this is kind of the strategy we want you all to use, or Nick to use, or others, that's great. But here are some guidelines, some things that you can use, some tools to develop it or to come up with this, and the matrix is one of those. But what I won't accept is a guideline or something that we, or something that's not really a policy in saying, that is what we're going to do. Just because we scored it out and it scores a high, well, that's exactly what we're going to do, because your guideline says that. And generally, I want to make sure we're careful about what we put down to paper, in paper, when it comes to policy versus guideline. Guidance documents are just that, they're guidance documents. You know, it gives a, a right and left limit, if you will, to the various committees and planning commissions, but it's not the policy. And I think we need to make sure we all understand that before we go forward.
Mike?
Well, it's because of the subjectivity of it. I mean, that's, that's exactly what's here. You've got staff evaluating on a subjective scale. What they're going to be doing is giving us a suggestion based on their subjective scale. It's up to us to say, yeah, we understand, or no, we want to go a little bit this way or that way. It's a great tool. If it was up to me, you'd have ones across the board. Take some of that subjectivity out of it, they get it or they don't. Because I think where Scott was going here, we're going to be defining a little bit too tightly. And we're going to take that subjectivity out, and we're going to, we're going to incentivize ourselves out of business. Not because we're giving too much money out, because we're not giving any out, because people aren't making the right criteria. So this is a suggestion that staff is going to go with the presentations that they've had. They've got 20, what, sorry, I don't have it memorized yet. You've got 10 items, right? So you've got to score 10. I, I don't understand the range, because that's putting too much onus on staff. So you get, you get 10 or something less than that. We are not predetermining, as said many times here, that if you get a five, you're only going to get 30%. If you get a seven, you're going to get 40%. I would never support something like that. As the mayor started out to say, every deal is different. Every neighborhood is different. And as much as we'd love to say, yes, we want an affordable housing component, not every neighborhood is going to support the affordable housing. It, it's a reality. If we take that away, Ryan's going to pull his hair out, because he's not going to have any place to go. He's not going to have any land left to be able to, to do anything. And, and we all know, and Ryan has pounded this in my head, I've listened, Ryan, trust me. You're opening up. If you're doing this up here, you're opening this down here. So in essence, you are creating, not segregating, not pigeonholing, but it's just the natural evolution. If you open up these up here, maybe on the other, the upper, upper levels, upper monetary levels, I'm not saying that correctly, but you know what I mean? You're opening up something down there. So this to me, again, is a great tool, thank you very much. My suggestion, I would go one across the board. Take this subjectivity out, because ultimately, it's going to come up to the nine of us over here. They're just making a recommendation.
Scott?
So go back to subjectivity, we all play a role in subjectivity, or we all be, even sitting up here. What, what's important, it's based on a lot of our knowledge, best practices, our understanding of the situation. And it's our responsibility to articulate that. If I'm going to vote a certain way, my job is based on my knowledge, my understanding of the topic, and start articulate back to whomever's making that final decision of what, what to go with. And it's based on evidence oftentimes, you know? Maybe affordable housing right now, we put it as a guideline and said, well, it should be in here, but we look around and things are a little bit different in this, this geographical area of the neighborhood, and it doesn't make sense. Well, we should articulate that in this. So I, I think the subjectivity is important component, in the sense that someone can mark down, and maybe there should be a narrative box of why you think that, or why the committee thinks that, or why the Nick thinks that, or why the planning commission thinks that, or what, whoever's implementing some of these evaluations. But I think we have to take the knowledge of our, and the skills that we have of the people around us, to give us a reason for why they're giving them that high score, that low score. Just putting a score in there, that's not enough. But articulating why you're doing that.
Lynn?
Yeah, so, and then getting back to what you originally said. And I, so I think that this is, as you were talking, this is really just a step in a piece of the puzzle, it seems like. So this conversation, this bigger conversation, I think would be really important for us to have, in, you know, what is the long-term strategy? What is it that we actually are looking for in, in housing? We're doing that with the, we're looking at the Udo, which is enormously helpful at painting a picture and, and setting a, setting a path. But I think it would be really helpful for this group to also have a conversation about how, how we answer that question. Because what I worry about is becoming way too pro, way too reactive to, to developments. We just wait for some, something to come, and hopefully it's what we want, and then we can approve it. So it would be nice to, to be, to continue to be more proactive with, you know, using something like this. So I think that would be great.
And I would say that this is, this is a tool to help us be proactive, because we're putting,
Yeah, I would agree.
We're putting guidelines out there for the developers to be able to say, these are the kinds of things that if you're interested in incentives from this council, these are the kinds of things that we're interested in seeing. And, you know, this, my hope is that the city doesn't ever think of itself as a, as a real estate developer. And so in some, in some ways, we are reliant on developers saying, I'm going to come here. And we do have to be reactive rather than proactive, because we're not going to be doing the development, development ourselves.
Sure, but we can, but we can be, we can invite, you know?
Right, we can, and this, and I think this is a, this is a tool to help invite, and also to help developers understand what the invitation is. So, because this, not only the tool, but then how we end up using it, and what, and where we end up giving incentives based on the scores that, that we see here and where they're, where they are, helps kind of put some definition on that invitation to those developers. Lets them know what it is that we're looking for. Because right now, we could just say something really nebulous, like, we'd like more affordable housing. What does that mean? What's that going to bring to us? Here's a tool that at least helps those developers see, see that, and be able to help figure that out. So I do, I see it as a step toward that. Yeah, Keith?
And I think when you take a look at specifically incentive programs, as we continue to watch these, and every once in a while, yeah, the state makes some changes and stuff too, that we look at, right? Really, I think when you look at the NEZ, the pilot, the Oprah, and associated ones with that, and the CDBG, I think we're using those, and really in a lot of ways, they're pretty reserved right now for affordable type projects. The brownfield, we've definitely have had some discussions about that, and that would be one area that I think we outlined here. We definitely would strongly recommend that there's a lot of other, outside of affordable housing, which I'm not discounting, Lynn, but we want to make sure that the brownfield, we want to use as a tool to accomplish a lot of other things. Particularly in the downtown environment, because the TIF, the tax increment financing that allows us to do, and then so much of the public infrastructure, and particularly, I think we haven't used it yet this way, but like, we've had trouble with paying for snowmelt infrastructure historically. And now we've worked with the state and we haven't used it yet, but now that's an allowable public infrastructure. So the brownfield would be one where I think absolutely there's an ability to use that as, I'm going to use the word leverage. Affordable housing is a possible goal. But we definitely want to make sure that we're communicating too, that there's brownfields that we want to use for a lot of other purposes too. Where the other four right now, I think, really are geared towards affordable housing. And if we know that this is a communication from council, even, even if it's not, you need to score 23 out of 36, otherwise you don't get it, right? I don't think, and, and I'm glad I'm hearing the discussion from all of you, where maybe a change to more kind of a commentary along with a score. I, I think that's a very good direction to go. But yet, I will tell you that if you adopt this, this gives us more space, and Ryan by extension in his work, to be able then to say, hey, we're speaking with, with council's voice on the way that we're looking at these incentives. And you get more of the incentive if you deliver these things that we're saying that council is important.
Yeah, Mike?
Well, and let's, the whole reason that we're having this discussion is, the city does not want to have egg on their face like we did with Lot 7C a couple of years ago. A great project came, staff had absolutely no idea to say, go ahead. So we've had umpteen discussions on putting a, a matrix, a rubric, a questionnaire, or whatever, a rating system, so that staff can initially evaluate a worthwhile project or not worthwhile project. So that if another 7C comes in, they can, you know, okay, yeah, that kind of fits the neighborhood, that kind of fits the, the wave that council is now feeling, it's worthwhile. Let's, let's go a little bit further on that. So I, I like the flexibility. I like the, I like this, its originally, its original intent, and what is being developed now to it. Can there be a little bit of tweaking? Absolutely. But let's not forget that that's what this is here for. We are giving them some ideas. Again, it's still ultimately up to the nine of us to make that final decision. They're just coming with a recommendation, saying, okay, we vet, we vetted this to this point, based on this criteria. And maybe to Scott's point, a little bit more commentary in there. This is why we did this. And then we have the discussion. Yeah, it fits the neighborhood, it doesn't fit the neighborhood, it fits our dreams, it fits our whims, whatever the case may be at that time. But ultimately, again, it's up to the nine of us. This is just a tool so that they can bring us something, and be proactively going out there, as you were saying, and try to get some of these developments. And that's, again, we had the, the study of the umpteen parks and umpteen city parcels that we had. We see where, where that landed on Thirty-Sixth Street, but we have other components like that out there. That was another, another development of what we started out with Lot 7C. That's, I'll never forget that in all my years on council.
Well, one day when we can, we'll have coffee, and you can tell me all about that, because I don't- So I, I appreciate that context. It's really, really helpful, and that you pointed out the other incentives. And I was going to ask about the NEZ, because what I remember, in the document, this is way back when Sue was here, there was actually sort of a layered in, in our, I, I assume it was, I assume it was more than just a guideline. It actually said, you get an NEZ, a certain level or a percentage of tax payment based on your, the, the income of the household you'll be serving. Is that still in place? Because this language is different than that.
Yeah. Well, I can't speak to the history. I don't know, Mark, if you know exactly that history. I can, I think I can speak to what we're intending to use this for, but, Mark?
I, I believe that there was a policy, and, and perhaps it still is on the books. But I, I do remember that four or five years ago, council using some kind of a policy in evaluating NEZs at that time. And I don't, I don't know what happened to that, but there was a point in time that was happening, yes.
Yeah, I think the reason I bring it up is because this doesn't, I mean, there are, there are projects that do not fit this, this description that are receiving NEZs, or have received NEZs recently.
Not so recently. It's been, I don't think I've been involved with an NEZ since I've been here. I'm looking at, Mark, can you?
I, it didn't, didn't the project, isn't somebody?
So, yeah.
The Eighth Street, didn't anybody get an NEZ there, no?
That was before I was here.
I, yeah, I believe some of them on Eighth Street did receive NEZs. I, I personally was not involved in those review processes though, so.
And I'm not, I'm not, it's neither here nor there. I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's a conflict somewhere with who's, who's actually receiving NEZs, and what it says on the books, and what it says here. So I was just hoping for clarification of that somewhere, sometime.
Yeah, if they're approved, they're approved. So anything that we adopt, we wouldn't go back and say, oh, you didn't get it anymore. I don't think even we could.
No, but this says guidelines, so I don't, I guess getting back to, to Scott's.
I, I think guidelines is, is, and I think that goes back to kind of what Mike was saying, is that there's an element where we're looking to bring you more substance than probably that exists now. Have some commentary around it, so that we can bring our, what I always believed to be neutral perspective on something. And then ultimately, you have a little bit more substance, and then you guys are going to have to make a decision. And I think it works, I, I think it works the best that way. If, if you guys do something that's a little bit too heavy, you know, too heavy on this number gets, or this number doesn't, or this exact situation gets, or this doesn't, it puts in an area of subjectivity, right, and then we score it? Well, then all of a sudden, the, the disagreement can be, well, you scored that a three, and it really should have been a two, and over here, that, like, I, I can definitively say, we don't want, you know, any piece of that. But yet, you don't want to then just say, okay, we're not going to have anything, right? So, it is, it's, it's tough, and it's a tough balance and all that. I, I do want to say one other thing too, that I think is really important, that I think also speaks to the, we've having a lot of discussion about the position that doesn't have anyone in it yet, right? And it may not have anyone in it full-time for a while, just, but Mark and his team, right, do a great job and should stay pure, if you would, on the planning component elements of this. If you go way back in time, these type of incentives and working those types of negotiations, quite frankly, is what they are quite often, right? Was Greg Robinson, way back in the old days. And then with the economy that we went through, we had the ability where we had the unicorn, I'm going to tell him I call him a unicorn, Tim Vogli, who had a lot of experience in a lot of different areas, and he really picked that ball up. Knowing that we're losing him at the end of this year. This is also a position where I'm really looking for someone in that assistant city manager position that has, has some bones, has some expertise, has some experience in these areas, that really can bring that to the table. And that would be the position that I think would primarily be working in this area, because third floor is better off if they don't, aren't taking a look at the site plan and, and the zoning, and also doing the negotiations on things. So I just, I forgot about saying that earlier, and I think that's helpful, maybe, for you to understand kind of the components of how we see this piecing together.
So what are you looking for from us today on this? Just a nod moving forward? What's the?
I'm kind of reading a consensus where I think the first two documents are probably there. We might do some thinking, Scott, to make sure that we're, I don't know, the word is overly important, but that there's at least understanding of what the words we use mean. Guidelines, I think, I, I always think of policy is more something that to some extent, this would be your policy, and then the procedures in the tool would be kind of an administrative responsibility. So, whether that, we call that in a guideline or a procedure, I will take your lead on that.
I, I think my, my read around the table is, whatever, whatever it is, we don't want to be locked into having to do something based on a score that's given to us. That, oh, hey, you hit, it's total thirty-six, you, you hit twenty-seven, twenty-seven means you get thirty percent. No, we want to, we, we want to know twenty-seven, but we still want the ability to be able to decide what to do with that twenty-seven, and look at how that twenty-seven came to be. You know, what's included in that twenty-seven.
And I'm seeing that around, around the dais. So let us do some work on that element, and then we'll bring this back. I don't think we have to wait too long, but we'll bring this back, and depending on how much is there, we'll see if we bring it to another study session, or if we bring it directly to a council meeting. Does that sound okay to everyone?
Sounds good. I think so, yeah. Sounds good.
Thank you.
I do want to make sure, before we fully transition out of this though, because there were a couple different elements. Ryan has been waiting patiently in the audience also, Ryan Kilpatrick of Housing Next. And he might have some comments and say, well, Keith nicely was wrong on those three things, and let me correct him. So, but also Ryan, we wanted to have Ryan here tonight to also talk about kind of what's happening regionally, and also highlight some documents that were in your packet, that he definitely had a role in, I know through Ottawa County. So, Ryan, you get front and center.
Did you sanitize the podium after the last user? I don't recall, I-
I don't know if I should take that as a sign of something or not.
We want to make, it's, you should worry more if we want to sanitize it after you've used it.
Or that we don't remember.
Thanks for the opportunity to talk. I think the conversation tonight was great, hitting on all the right elements. Just as a quick follow-up to the conversation, I think it's important to recognize that the, the policy document as originally drafted two years ago, when we put that together, the consideration was, you've got lots of incentive tools available to you as a city, especially as a core community. And those tools are dials. They're not on and off switches. And so as you tweak those dials, you want to be able to communicate to the public and to the development community what your priorities are, so that when they come to you and say, we want all of everything, you can very clearly say, well, our policy says that we are looking for these things, and if they're not included, then you don't get all of everything. We're going to dial those dials way down. So I think the conversation that was had tonight is like spot-on in terms of that perspective. And it seems like the, the proposed adjustments are exactly what are necessary. Terms of the other work that we're doing across the county, as Keith mentioned, we have promulgated in partnership with Ottawa County, a best practice guide to payment in lieu of tax agreements. That was developed in partnership with county staff and the newly created Ottawa County Housing Commission. If you're not aware, Ottawa County had a housing commission several years ago that was kind of mothballed for a few years. The county administrator and the board of commissioners has revived that group. There's a full board, meets monthly. They're putting together a countywide strategic plan. We've got a big meeting coming up in a week or so, where we're really going to talk about, how do we begin to move some priorities forward on a regional level, both on the south end and the north end of the county, as well as throughout the rest of the county? How do we convene partners in those regions to have conversations about how much more housing supply is needed, and at what price points? And how do we encourage collaboration from cities and townships and villages, to really all participate in that conversation together, and think about, how do we all own this, and take some responsibility, while simultaneously, to use your word, encourage investment in that kind of housing? Really to, to ensure that we're getting investments in all price points, and we're getting that market rate housing that we need, and we're also getting housing that is affordable to households that earn less than sixty or eighty percent of the area median income. So looking forward to involving you all, as well as city staff, in those conversations as we move that ball along. But then we've also got a couple of exciting projects that we're working on in the city of Holland. We don't have all of the ducks in a row yet. We do have good momentum on Waverly and Twenty-Fourth, where you all have seen a, a concept plan there. We've got a couple of development partners that are engaged. We've got a few things to tie down before we make anything public. But I'm excited, we, we should be able to come back to you later this fall with some proposals, that are actually very much in line with the concept that you saw, gosh, a year and a half ago. And then another project that we're working on downtown, that is also very exciting, I think accomplishes a lot of the goals that have been talked about tonight. So looking forward to bringing more information to you about that soon. But then, Holland Township has really stepped up. We've got a lot of projects that are in the pipeline in Holland Township. Several projects that are pursuing four percent low-income housing tax credits in the township. And there are some funding glitches there based on interest rates, and I won't get super wonky with that, with you tonight, but we're hopeful that some federal legislation is coming forward to adjust those interest rates, to make those projects more financially competitive. And that we're getting a lot more housing actually under construction, not just in the development pipeline, but bricks and two-by-fours actually in the ground. So, I am hopeful that in another six months, I can come back to you and tell you that we've got a lot of projects under construction. Right now, we've got a lot of projects that are approved and moving towards construction, but not yet in the ground. And then lastly, I would say, with Blackwater Flats, which originated as Macatawa Farms, that was kind of what started a lot of this dialogue about, gosh, we should have a housing policy. Because the city was creative in using brownfield as an incentive tool, to ensure that some level of affordability was guaranteed over the long term. And we kind of just put that together on the fly, and said, we should be able to communicate this tool to the general public so that they know what the expectations are and how it works. And the great news is that Blackwater Flats is now under construction. They've got their first couple of buildings framed. And half of those units will be preserved for a good chunk of time for households earning eighty percent AMI or below. And so I think that is the, kind of the first win in southwest Ottawa County, that we really hope to build on going into the future. So, happy to answer any questions about Housing Next or anything else.
Questions, comments for Ryan? Yes, Lynn?
So, based on the conversation you heard tonight, and what you know of city of Holland, what would, what would be our next step? Like, what do we as council do next? We, we, we're going to approve this, this assessment tool? What, how, how should we proceed?
Yeah, well, there was good dialogue at the beginning about the idea that we would have sort of priorities for the share of housing on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. And that was something that we had kind of chatted about and included in the document as a way to say, let's see if this sticks or not. And the idea there is really that, so under the Planning Enabling Act under the state, the city has to reevaluate its master plan on a five-year basis. And so the planning commission looks at its master plan every five years and says, do we need to make any changes or not? And as part of that process, I think you'd have an opportunity to think about, to what extent does the, does the plan currently focus on housing? And to what extent do we want to bolster the language about housing in the city's priorities? And that can, can kind of be dialed up gradually, or you can really go full-tilt in terms of having a housing plan that's citywide. Doing something on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis is more time and cost-intensive. And you've really got to have somebody that's, that's able to champion that effort. But I think setting some goals that pertain to housing, and as part of your next master plan update process, would be a helpful next step. To really say, these are the, some of the things that we really want to make sure that we're achieving. And that will provide guidance that is written in a, a document that has teeth, right? That informs your zoning ordinance, that informs future policy proposals. So, it feels like this council today has a lot of sympathy and empathy for the issue of affordability. And if you want to enshrine that in further documents, going further into the future, there's an opportunity to put that into the master plan, as something that is a priority. Some of the other things I, I think are really building on the steps that have already been taken, you know, doing that public property inventory, and assessing where do we have sites that are readily available. But also really thinking about, how do you build on the downtown and the waterfront master planning process? And what are the steps necessary to begin to kind of goose the system, in terms of ensuring that developers are aware of those projects in the pipeline? There may be a lot of stuff happening in the background that I'm not aware of, and there may be a lot of moving parts happening already. But ensuring that you've got interest in those projects, as Mike alluded to earlier. New market rate housing is also good, right? We want to get empty nesters out of their suburban houses so young families can move into them. And we want to ensure that we can build new construction that is also affordable, right? Both of those things are important. And so finding priorities within that spectrum, and defining how you want to pursue those, and enshrining those in some of your documents and policies, that's the best way to do it. I think also acknowledging that government is slow, right? I mean, that's kind of the purpose of, of the way government functions, is we don't do anything quick, we do it deliberatively, and we do it democratically. And so this sort of methodical prodding along sometimes is, is also important.
I was trying to think of a witty way to say this, and, and actually, I think I might have found my opening, Ryan, and tell me if I'm wrong, but government is slow, but what I've been reminded of over the last two and a half years in particular, because I knew what I was walking into here to some extent with some affordability issues, is I think development is possibly as slow as government is. It just is. I mean, so some of the projects that we've talked about, whether they be affordable or not, I mean, it's pretty fair to say, it's kind of like, it's two annual cycles before something's first envisioned, before it actually starts getting built. Is that overly simplistic, or is that what you're, particularly in the environment today, is that what you're finding?
Yeah, well, yeah, today's environment is particularly difficult for, for construction and development. I mean, I think ten years ago, it was a lot, well, I should say maybe fifteen years ago now. It was a lot easier to just build something, right? The market was there, the financing was there, everybody was eager to invest. And a lot of folks made higher wages relative to what our working class makes today. And so it was easier to get those deals done fifteen years ago. Now, even market rate projects don't pencil out, unless we're really targeting a high-income household. For single-family, it's really three hundred thousand dollars and up for the most part. And for attached multifamily, whether it's condos or apartments, we can really only serve that market segment that is right about ninety percent of AMI and up. And so as developers try to figure out, how do we get a project done? They're looking at multiple sources of capital, right? It's, it's not just you go to the bank, you get a loan, you put a little bit of equity in, and you do a deal. do a deal. There are multiple sources of capital, there are multiple partners in the deal, they've got to come negotiate with the city about incentives. And a lot of developers, including, you know, us as a partner, don't want to commit to buying land until they know that they can finance the project, because otherwise they're stuck with the land and no financing to do the deal. And so there's this constant like push-pull about, you know, how far do we go before we know we're committed and we can actually get financed. So that's a really long way of agreeing with you, Keith.
Anyone that agrees with me, I like.
Great. Any other questions? Yes, Scott?
Thank you for spending your evening with us. I appreciate it. We did a needs assessment to determine what that need was, right, all price points. How often does that get updated? And then, and on top of that, how much of a dent have we made? Because there have been a number of projects that have been approved and in development. So what kind of dent have we made in that needs assessment, and how often does it get updated?
Yeah, great question, Scott. Thank you. So the needs assessment was conducted at the end of 2018, and initially, we thought, we'll update this every five years. About a year ago, we started to realize, well, we're going to get brand-new census data at the end of 2020. Maybe we should update it once the census is completed. And then we hit COVID, right? And like, a lot of things have changed now about the housing market, and we think probably more will change in the next six months. So Lynn and I have actually had this conversation as part of the responsive grant fund that funded that initial housing needs assessment. Our hope is to update that in the spring again. Once the census data is available, and hopefully, we've got a better sense of hindsight about the impact of COVID-19 on the real estate market, we want to update that study again. Based on the data that we had, in southwest Ottawa County, we were looking at a need for a little over forty-two hundred additional units in the marketplace. We've got two thousand multifamily units in the marketplace in the pipeline now. And I should put a caveat on that, about fifteen hundred of those, two thousand are actually in southwest Ottawa. The other few hundred are in the north end of the county. In terms of the number of affordable units, we've got about four hundred that would be workforce housing, and so that would be affordable to households earning between forty percent and eighty percent of area median income. We do not yet have a project that is fully baked, that hits a price point below forty percent AMI, but we're close. And that's actually one that we'll be bringing back to you hopefully in a couple of months. There is a need for about a thousand of those units priced below forty percent AMI countywide, and about six hundred of those units are needed in this portion of the county. We might hit forty or fifty of those units with our first project. That's the price point that is hardest to get at. The math doesn't make sense without a lot of subsidy when you're building brand-new. And so it really requires a lot of federal investment, and those federal dollars are scarce and competitive. So we are moving in the right direction. We are moving the needle. We've got development in the pipeline. I would say we're a little bit behind where I think I want to be at this point. You know, our target right now is set on the end of 2022, and then we'll adjust our target after the next housing needs assessment. But we would need more in the pipeline to really achieve a balanced market by 2022, based on what we have in the pipeline today.
What I've been hearing from you is we've made a considerable dent
Yes.
in what we wanted to accomplish. And that's, I guess, hats off to everyone involved. I mean, it's not just the city of Holland, but our neighbors too alike. But we also have Thirty-Sixth Street that was just approved. That has not come, you know, it's not been developed yet, but I think that's going to also make another serious dent to the Holland area specifically, I would think.
Yep, absolutely. I think that was a really critical project to get approved, and you couldn't have better developers working on it.
Other questions?
Great. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, capital projects update.
Yes, and we're still right on schedule at six forty-five, I see, so.
We are. We're about five minutes over.
We do not want to delay this again, and I know Matt's really excited, but we have a lot of people that have worked on these projects. So I'm going to tell Matt, Matt, don't accelerate through this. Give the presentation that you were looking to have, because there's a lot of good stuff in here. And again, it points out how much people just work every single day, and a lot of times at night, moving this stuff forward. So Matt, I'm excited to see this.
Yeah, so thank you, Keith. I'll try to not go at my normal pace. We'll try to bring it down to the normal. I'll try not to get too caffeinated up here. But you made a good point. You know, I'm the one giving this presentation tonight to the city council, but it's really, you know, Brian and his team, and Andy and his team, that are the ones that are the boots on the ground every day, making these things happen, making our city look absolutely gorgeous. And we're going to show some slides, going to show a brief video, going to give you kind of some of the investments that we've made recently that you've approved in capital expenditures, and some of the things that are currently going on. And so that's kind of what some of those impacts have been on the community. So I hope at the end of the presentation, you're all as proud of what has been accomplished in the last two to eighteen months ago, and its impact on your community. So with that, this is Cinca slide. So she was, the city, progress continues. We bought a fire truck. I mean, that's, how cool is that, right? I had the plastic one that had the little light that would go run around and around, and then that died after, you know, two weeks after Christmas. But we actually purchased a fire truck that is in construction now and is going to be delivered in January. So that's pretty exciting. I mean, that's a pretty cool, yeah, Scott, yeah, that's an exciting thing. We've put in sidewalks. So we are closing gaps in our sidewalks. We're fixing our sidewalks. As I think all of you know, there's a funding mechanism through the CDBG funds that help with that. And then we also dedicate annually a significant amount in our MCIF to make sure that the sidewalks that we use in this community are up to the standards that we expect them to be. You can see this happens to be a stretch of sidewalk on Thirteenth Street that was recently repaired. So good-looking stuff, nice and even, safe for the kiddos.
That's right up my block now. I trip when I walk.
See, that's great. We can just end the presentation now, right? We're done. We have succeeded. Success. So I think as all of you know, Sixteenth Street is being reconstructed, and we're going to look at some of the slides of the completed piece. But what you may not know is this also actually stubs the snowmelt across River Avenue. So it doesn't make a connection yet, but we're trying to think, you know, down the road, it makes sense to have that loop. So we're actually taking this opportunity to not only fix all the other infrastructure, but to put the snowmelt transmission mains in the ground to get across that. So some pretty good stuff there. You can see all of the construction. You can see the stormwater in there. This is Sixteenth Street again, all the big stuff. Brian's interns went out and took a number of shots of all the stuff that they're doing out on Sixteenth Street. So this is under construction, as you know. And then we get out towards Pine, that's already complete. So all the new asphalt, you know, looking nice. That's, I trailered my boat down Sixteenth Street the other day, and it was just nice and smooth and wonderful. And you can see all the new ADA stuff at the sidewalk intersections for Sixteenth as well. Again, ADA improvements here. Twenty-first Street is being reconstructed as well. You can see in this photograph, it is pretty well deconstructed, and they began to put that back together. As of today, I don't know if they've put asphalt out on Twenty-first Street or not, but I'm sure it's on its way soon if it hasn't been. Again, Twenty-first Street, we're doing, Ryan touched on the Black River Farms or Black River Hills, it was Makatawa Farms, but out at Kensington. So this is the main road, Main Street going back into that development. So that's an exciting piece. And then I refer to these as Brian's giant water cannons, or squirt guns. So in my vision, you know, when we get that real heavy rain like we had on Monday night, these things are just fire and water out across, you know, Lake Makatawa. I suspect that's not the case. I suspect it's more of a slow roll out of these, but, you know, these were accomplished, and now we don't have the flooding issues on Pine Avenue. So pretty neat stuff. We built a, didn't build, but we replaced a park out at Lakeview. So this is Mayor, this is out in your neck of the woods. I'm assuming your children probably played at this park when they were a little bit younger, or maybe you have.
They did, and I did both, yeah.
It's a wonder, we may or may not have a video of a certain someone, I won't say his name, but his initials are AK, testing out the swings out here once the construction was complete. So I'll leave that up to your imagination.
I have seen that video.
Have you guys seen that video as well? This is a really neat partnership with the neighbors. There's some pretty significant donations that were made to spruce up a park that was, it was starting to age. Well, I have some better photos here in just a second, but if you see the gentleman in the orange shirt, he's got a trowel. What they're actually doing is they're putting down a rubberized base.
I saw those, those were darling.
So all of the stuff inside the little squiggly white line is actually a rubberized base, really. I mean, you could fall out of that swing that I just mentioned, and you'd bounce. So it gives probably a couple of inches if you're just going up and down real light. They did some aesthetic improvements, so that base is actually put in the form of a couple tulips, and that's poured right into that base of the playground. So you can see the rubber floor, a better, obviously, a better description than what I had. But these folks putting in all that equipment, and then you see the playground itself is absolutely beautiful. Fits right in well with the neighborhood. The Parks Department, I think, did a great job of landscaping around it. You can see they actually added some sod. They had some little additional funding they'd used to bring that up to snuff right away. So just a great project out there at Lakeview. The dog park at Veneralty Farm. So we are now, as of today, we're under construction. This was the original kind of rendering that we bought in front of you and said, hey, guys, do we want to do this? Do we not? And you said, yes, we do, and we want to do it the right way, which I think is the way that we should do things. And we added the restrooms, we added all of the amenities within the park to make it wonderful. We staked it, it was staked today. We had some trees removed out there. And this is really what the final drawings are. These are the construction documents from the original renderings, the building itself, how that's going to lay out. And then this is actually us, not us, the Parks Department, I guess us, out there clearing the site, working to clear the site a couple of weeks ago. So they were brush hogging, removing all of the stuff that's in there. Here's a couple shots. And then you can see this shot is when we started to actually go into the trees. They've limbed them up. So Parks, our crew went, and they limbed everything up to about eight feet. You can see through the park. They were out there today. There's a piece up in the corner here that's got some really mature trees, so they were clearing that all out so that the dogs can run in there. It's going to be large. You know, you don't realize it until they stake it, and you're sitting there and you're thinking about, you know, Mabel, Andy's dog, is about that big, and she's like eight pounds. She's going to have a lot of room to run around in. My dog Dutch is ninety-five pounds, and he's going to have a lot of room to run around in. So it's really a wonderful project. Really looking forward to it. Here's a picture of the Parks crew back working in that corner to remove some of those larger trees, clear that area. As you know, early this year, we actually replaced the playground at Veneralty Farm. So Veneralty Farm went from a park that really gets a lot of use in the wintertime with the sledding hill, and it gets a lot, some hiking use. I think with the addition, we've already seen it with the addition of the new playground, and also the, obviously, the dog park, and the heated restrooms, very important for little ones when it's the wintertime. I think we've just really increased dramatically the amount of use that Veneralty Farm Park is going to get, especially on that south side. So just wonderful improvements. You can see there are actually kiddos out there the day. The guys went out and took photos.
Matt, I'm embarrassed to say, I don't know exactly where this is at Veneralty Farm.
So if you pull into the parking lot off of Twenty-Fourth Street,
Yep.
the dog park is going to be immediately to your west.
Yep.
This is immediately to your east.
Oh, okay.
So where the restrooms are, the dog park entrance will be seventy, eighty yards, and this will be fifty, sixty yards. So they're all right there, nice and close to each other. And then, you know, the restrooms are about at forty, fifty yards from the entrance to the sledding hill. So easy access. And again, just a wonderful little playground. So this, we're going to go through a few slides here, and I want to emphasize how important to you, and Keith, feel free to jump in as well, but how important the investment that was made in the grow house is to how our community looks when other people come to visit it. And it really struck me how much of a difference this made when, the first time I walked into City Hall when they put the landscaping in. I've never, I've been here for almost twenty-three years. I've never seen that look that good, to the point where people are stopping in our parking lot, pulling in, getting out, and taking pictures of the landscaping when you walk into City Hall, getting back in their cars and leaving. I've never seen that before. It's just a huge investment, and what it really, Andy's talked to you about this before, but it allows those flowers to get a little bit larger, so that when they go in the beds downtown, after the tulips come out, go in the beds in Centennial Park, they have an immediate impact, because they're big. And they're all spread out, they don't need six or eight weeks to get big enough where they make an impact. They're big when they get there. So you can see downtown, I hope all of you have been through downtown in Centennial Park, because they're just, they're absolutely beautiful, the beds. This is the inside of the greenhouse. As you know, this spring was really the first time we were able to use that thing. They've got a mix of stuff on beds, they've got a mix of stuff on the ground. And I want to actually take a minute and show you this.
I haven't seen this. You've got to see.
I think that's pretty cool. I'm not a big plant guy, you know, I don't know geranium from marigold, but we've got people that do, and they really took the tool that you authorized us to build, and I think leveraged it to make a huge impact. So they're doing a fantastic job out there. It's just really amazing how much of an impact that grow house has had on the community. Again, the flower beds downtown squirrel. Sometimes you forget, sometimes you forget how cute those little guys are, so. And I have a tendency to kind of go, squirrel.
Squirrel.
Squirrel, squirrel.
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 Like, god, you want to go.
Yeah, pretty much. Again, Centennial Park, the flower beds in there. Hopefully, you've all started to see the new park signs. The city council adopted the wayfinding and signage program. We completed that for downtown over the last couple of years. We put, I want to say it's twenty-six park signs in, in the last couple of weeks. So you can see these are just a smattering of them, but it falls completely in line with all of our other signage plan. So we're really getting that unified look where you are, it doesn't matter if you're standing at Smallenburg Park or Veneralty Farm, or on the corner of Athan River downtown, you see signage that all looks the same, and it really solidifies our brand. I think that's more important than we realize. Bowls Pool, this Bowls Pool has gotten probably more use this year than any other year, as outdoor pools are allowed under the governor's executive order with some social distancing guidelines. You approved the sandblasting and the resealing of Bowls Pool, and that is just getting a ton of use, not to mention it's been, you know, hot, hot lately. So Bowls is doing, looking great.
And that was tough. Andy and I did have a couple of conversations of, all right, it's fixed. Do we put water in it? Do we not put water in it? What's happening with the executive orders? And I think we made the right decision. And I think they're doing a really good job of following social distancing out there, but it is busy.
It is busy, and while normally, we would open Bowls Pool to, you know, eleven o'clock to seven o'clock, whatever the normal hours for children in the community primarily, you know, families to go swim. If you look real close in this photo, you can see swim caps. So generally, the kids that go to Bowls in the summertime aren't wearing swim caps. This has allowed actually some of the competitive swim teams in the area, a number of them, to use Bowls Pool in the morning. My son is a competitive swimmer, and is at Bowls every morning at seven-thirty, which is interesting to try to get him out of bed. But he is there every morning swimming, and it's really given our athletes in this area an opportunity to continue training. Window on the waterfront. I hope all of you have been out to window on the waterfront in the recent past. you have been out to Window on the waterfront in the recent past. We actually, Andy and I were approached by a gentleman who wishes to remain anonymous at Freedom Village last fall, about whether or not they could help out with some funding to make Window on the waterfront, Window on the waterfront again, and not Curtain on the waterfront. So we met with him. He, his, he's there, his wife is there, and it sounds like in some Alzheimer's care unit in there. They walk that quite often. So we were able to, just two weeks ago, three weeks ago now, to rent a very large piece of equipment that basically goes out. You start it at the top of the tree, and it goes, and the tree's gone, and to clean Window on the waterfront out. So it has now got really nice views. That's one of the areas that I go through on my lunch break, and there are more people using Window on the waterfront now than I've seen in a long time, which I think is a very good thing. You can see it opens that view up quite a bit. It really opens it up, and people can see out on the Window on the waterfront. There's actually the machine. It's just got these big giant teeth, and it's cool.
Our staff had, our staff had way too much fun with that piece of equipment, is what I heard.
Yes, they, they did. And I was out talking to them one day. They did not offer to let me operate that equipment. You can see again, when, what's that?
You have overeating.
Yeah, I know. That would have been fun.
They made the right decision, I think.
Windmill Island Gardens, we did finish reskinning that pavilion out there this spring. So that's done. Unfortunately, you know, we can't have more than 10 people inside at one time, so we're looking forward again to the times where we can have weddings out there at the Windmill Island Pavilion. I believe this is the last thing, I believe. So we, at the Civic Center, one of the requirements from the Health Department, when we put the cool, walk-in coolers in, remember that was at the very end of the project, all the construction had been done, was that those walk-in coolers be covered, even though they're outdoors. So this spring earlier, we were able to contract with a local firm and put a canopy up over those walk-in coolers. So that was our last major requirement from the Health Department to hold our catering events there. Again, this pains me dearly that that project is not open to the public currently. So we're, we're working with them. The Civic Center Place Board and Venue Works are working close together to try to come up with creative ways to safely comply with executive orders, but still have something that happens at the Civic Center. There's, there's been a, a number of outdoor events there, some very small indoor events with less than 10 people, and we actually had a funeral at the Civic Center. So they're working a number of different things to try to get that building up and running again with people using it. So with that, for now, that's what we have accomplished in the recent past through the capital projects.
So that was fun. It's not as, it's not as much fun as getting in the van and touring around the city. So as soon as we can, we think that was just a nice add, and we know that you enjoy that. So we'll, we'll try to do that at lea, I think at least two times a year. There's more than enough going on out there that we'll, we'll make good use of a night and do that. But it, it's been too long, and there's a lot of stuff, so we wanted to highlight those. So thanks, thanks for giving us that time.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Keith. 7:15, other business. You're all good? Nope, you got it. Oh, yeah, you do have a couple things. That's right.
Two quick things. I'll go quick. One, Kathy will prefer me to give the update, and then she can answer questions. Just if you're aware, we're, a lot of information going out there, but there is a special election, only for the portion of Holland that's in Allegan County. And also, and I think a lot of people might miss this, the ballots are only going to be mailed to people that voted in the election. So if you did not vote in the election, even if you live in that area, you're not going to get a ballot, and you're not going to be able to vote. Okay? So those will be mailed. Kathy, see if I get this right. We're expecting that they're going to be mailed on Tuesday, August 18. They need to be returned back to City Hall no later than Tuesday, August 25 by 5:00 p.m. So there's a hard cutoff there. We will be tabulating them on Thursday, the 27th, and then the Board of Canvassers will certify that election on, already by the end of the month on the 31st. So I think that information is being put out there. There is an element, though, where it's only gonna, it's, it's pushed out, if you would, to the people that voted in the most recent election that are in that Allegan portion of the City of Holland. Okay? So just want to take a second to highlight that. And then the other thing, one other thing that's going to be on the consent agenda next week, but we're really excited about it. I'm really excited about it. Great team that put together. You know, we talked about it earlier tonight, that Tim Vogli somehow thinks that he needs to retire, and his wife, and he would agree with this, his wife went out on the conversation. It's sticking because they sold their house and they bought a new house in Cincinnati, Ohio, near, near family. He's, he's got a little apartment downtown that he's like, man, I really want to keep that apartment. It's fun living downtown, he says. But it is actually going to happen. So we went through a process. I'm not going to get into all the details, because you will receive in your consent agenda next week, per the charter, there's actually three positions that are affected here that you all need to consent to my appointment, and it's the City Auditor, City Treasurer, and Assessing Director. And technically, our Finance Director fills all three of those roles in our organizational setup. So you actually need to approve to my appointment of that person. We went through a process, which will be outlined in that memorandum that you'll get, and we are very pleased to announce that Lynn McHammon is going to be our new Finance Director. She has a great background, great history. We had a really strong field of applicants. We were very pleased, and she rose to the top. She comes to us from the village of Winfield, a suburb of Illinois, and knew about Holland, and actually had been looking to move up here with her husband, and had already purchased a house, and her husband's working up here. And we just think, again, she's going to be a fantastic add. So look for her credentials, but that will be on the consent agenda next week. And again, we will welcome here, her here warmly after Labor Day. And then Tim and her, we have a nice overlap for a period of time that we're working through. That's going to go really well to make sure that there's a download of a lot of information from that head of Tim's. But we're excited about that. And that's all I have this evening.
Great. Thank you. Anything from anyone else? All right. We are adjourned. Next week, 6:30 should be a quick one.
Sure.